Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is officially six o'clock. Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. And calling for order, our working and briefing session of the City Council of the City of Duncanville. So getting on with that. We won't waste any more time with any introductions other than we're thankful that COVID has had some abatement. Unfortunately, we're seeing in the news that it's somewhat on the rise. And we're gonna have to watch and see what happens in terms of Dallas County and the state of Texas. And what Governor Abbott may decide to do or Department of Health Services decides to do. For the time being, we are going back into working session face to face and in person. Oh, Chief. Of, uh, Chief, I've got chiefs and I'll sort the chief. Chief Roney.
Yes, sir.
I saw that we had an email from a new Department of Emergency Management person for the state of Texas.
I haven't seen that.
Right.
I just pay attention to my emergency management operator.
All right, I'll send it, I'll send it to you and Aretha and Chief, she wants to come visit, so.
Very good.
Okay. All right, okay. Getting on, uh, getting on for our working session. So, City Manager, Aretha, if you would go ahead and take care of the.
Yes, sir. All right. Okay. Item 4A is a, yes, to consider resolution rejecting all bids received for to rebuild the chlorine room at North Main Elevated Storage Tank. The chlorine room at North Main Pump Station experienced a catastrophic failure in 2018. Since that time, staff has been working with TML on the claim as well as a designer for the repairs. The city received two bids for repairs in June of 2011. One of the bids was non-responsive due to an error, and the other bid was significantly over our engineering estimate. Uh, the engineer's estimate was 140,000 and, excuse me, the only responsive bid was 261,000. We are asking that council reject the bid so that staff can re-advertise and, and reexamine this bid. Questions? Okay, 4B?
Hi. Quick, um, I noticed there was a statement in here about, uh, TML might pick up part of the, the cost?
Yes, we have a claim that has been filed with TML for this incident. And so we are working with them on what part of, of the cost they will cover. Anything else you want to, Mr. Ramey?
Yes, sir. So, it is, it is a claim, and we've, we've presented it. Uh, we've already been working with them and, um, in terms of getting the equipment, all the instrumentation tested and, and returned. Um, in terms of the final liability, you know, how much they'll actually pay is subject to when we get the bids.
Thank you.
Everything else?
Yeah, there is some legal actions also associated with the claim.
Yeah, Creator Electric is the one who installed it. So, we had an engineering report, there may have been a problem or violation, which kind of thing. So, we're working with TML, they would have a subrogation claim if we recover money, they would recoup that money and then pay us to get the claim.
Thank you.
Item 4B, this is our Blue Cross Blue Shield contract. This item is a one-year agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide medical insurance for our employees and our retirees who are on the plan. As we mentioned in our budget briefing, uh, we were fortunate for the past two years to get a rate passed, which means our rates did not increase due to our utilization and negotiations. This year, we were offered a 1.1% decrease in the contract. This decrease and its savings will be applied to the city's contribution to premiums and will save the city 193,000 for fiscal year 2122. Item 4C is our fuel purchase. It's a resolution authorizing the execution of a third-party option to renew a purchase agreement. This renewal is our annual fuel contract with Tarrant County Cooperative Purchase Agreement. The city operates a fuel point for city-owned vehicles at our service center. The city uses approximately 86,000 gallons of unleaded gasoline and 44,000 gallons of diesel fuel.
Just a comment on that. Oh, I'm glad, Greg.
My, um, I just didn't get the connection between, uh, the termination date of this contract being April 6th of '22. But this agreement is to purchase on as-needed basis.
So, we, um, we pay the, so the, the terms of the contract are basically a sort of like a cost, you know, a certain percent or a certain cost over what the market rate is without all the taxes. And so what we're just, what we are tying into is, is to that agreement. And so, um, again, it'll, it'll go all the way through until we don't need, you know, for another year until we renew it again. Um, Aisha, do you have anything else about the?
The as-needed basis is we fill up, uh, or fill our tanks every 10 days to two weeks depending on the utilization. And that's, that's all the as-needed is, just as our tanks get lowered, we order more fuel.
Okay. The comment I was gonna make is that the mark-on stipulated in the contract, and there's no change to that, which is important. So, it's spot market, so that, that's where the market fluctuates in terms of what the base price is gonna be. But the add-on to the mark-on applied by the oil company stays static, that does not change. So, yes, our costs are going to fluctuate, but that mark-on does not fluctuate, which keeps us in some realm of understanding what's gonna be happening. If you've been listening to what's been going on in the news in terms of what we pay as, as consumers going on out there at the pump. There was some speculation it's gonna rise over $3 a gallon here in North Texas. That hasn't happened yet, it got pretty close, got up in the mid-290s. Uh, but I was listening to some reports from oil analysts earlier this week, and they think it's gonna get, begin to drop in the summer. So, what that means is, who knows? It means it might go down a little bit, maybe we'll hit 260 once again. Uh, you know, when that happens, we don't know. But the key to this agreement, as I said, is that the mark-on remains static. And that's what's essential in terms of being able to budget and bring forward more purchases. Thanks, go ahead.
Uh, item 4D is a mill and overlay number two. In two, in FY20, a city signed a project-specific agreement with Dallas County to do mill and overlay on four road segments at a cost of $305,000. Due to mechanical issues, Dallas County was unable to perform the works and returned the funds to the city. The city did not receive the funds until FY21, mill and overlay contract was awarded to Anderson Asphalt. This contract is almost complete. The mill and overlay number two contract is to mill and overlay the four streets originally scheduled for FY20 as well as four additional road segments. The lowest bid, which is Peachtree Construction, has performed mill and overlay work for the city in the past and with positive results. Okay? Item 4E, sign control extra space storage. Uh, extra space storage at 303 East Highway 67 is requesting a variance to the sign ordinance to allow a 70-foot-high highway sign. This is a, is 20 feet higher than allowed in the ordinance. The Sign Control Board recommends approval of the variance on 27 May, 2021.
So, is that, I'm gonna go over the wall that's there.
The, so they aren't on their, on the property, you know, on their property against the highway. And again, that's typical for these, for the, um, the folks with the highway frontages, they want the big signs. And it's, and it's no different than like the one we did at McDonald's up on I-20 and others. You're asking a specific location on the property, sir?
No, 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 you're, you're answering. But I guess the other question is, we've seen this more than once now. And the wonder is, is something need to make standard versus it's happening to S U P, so you aren't.
I, I, I personally will say that you don't wanna get too-too standard on it. The reason you do S U P is a lot of cities moved away from the long, tall, monotone. And what you find is, it's, it sounds fine on the highway, but what ultimately will happen is you'll see someone in the middle of town saying, can I have a big sign? And so, it's easier and it gives you all more control by keeping this as an S U P so that we can, that verify it on a case-by-case scenario. So, I would not recommend giving up that process.
I'm just trying to recall what we talked about during the.
Comp plan?
Yeah. During the comp plan as well as during planning and zoning piece. But I know our ultimate goal is to, is to see, do we need so many S U Ps coming through around? So, what was, other word called it, said on that? Did I ever call that?
This sign ordinance, uh, is a variance. It's kinda like an S U P, but not specifically an S U P. And we have talked about when you went through your zoning, uh, over the last year, we talked about your sign ordinance probably needs to be reviewed. Because it, it does have some age on it, and we're, seem to be granting a lot of variances, which is an indicator that our ordinance doesn't meet with the modern signage, uh, that's going on in terms of digital signs and things of that nature. Where those things have changed over the years and how that's addressed in the future. And you may want it more of an administrative, instead of us having sign variances on your agenda, that's really an administrative function. We gotta write the rules so the staff can enforce them. And we're not here having to do these kind of things.
And, and that was the reason for the question?
That was the question. We also said that we've been patching our sign ordinance and so, and really reassigning staff to go back and look at it holistically. It even, it affects all signs, whether it's signs in yards and things like that. And so, we wanted to, as we had some issues during the election, of making sure that we were on the right document. So, that is a task that has been discussed among staff, but we will make sure that we keep that at the top of our list.
So, we don't have a timeframe with that right now?
Uh, let me work on that within the budget.
So, that was, that was the reason for the question, why I keep seeing.
And why, so the, uh, it's 50 feet right now, so that's the height, setting the ordinance for highways?
A highway is 50, and, um, without going to council, above 50, they have to come to, for you guys.
Is there any particular reason why it's set at 50 for highways?
Because it's old.
Well, I mean, when they said it though.
I, 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 I don't know the, the, the reason why it was set at 50. Um, you know, what I've seen in the past is not necessarily that 50 was anything special, except there was a certain point where council would say, you know, anything over this, we just wanna see, so we, we can deliberate and see if this is something we want. So, it wasn't intending to exclude any sign over 50, it's just that, you know, anything over 50 is something that, you know, come to you for consideration.
If you look at some cities, they have height requirements, most cities do have height requirements. So, if you were to get on the tollway and you drive from downtown to Frisco, you immediately know when you're in plan. Because they allow no signs over the grade of the road. So, and then Dallas has a certain height requirement they have. So, I don't wanna say it's arbitrary, but it was based on visual observation. Can we give our businesses adequate exposure from the highway? And so, now we see more and more signage with different, there's load limits and all those things, they put up signs higher now than they could a few years back, so.
Yeah, and the 70.
Just changing technology more than anything else, Councilman.
Yeah, and the 70 feet, that's just so they can get above, above that wall, above the tree that's there.
Yeah.
Is there anything you want to add? Randy's our building official, he's also the staff liaison to the sign control board.
The basis of the request for variance came when Tech Dot put a sound barrier wall up and reduced the visibility of the existing sign, which, you know, which was set there. So, when that Tech Dot, uh, put their wall up and reduced the visibility of their, of their sign, with advertising dollars, and they're losing that. It's more pertinent to the access for up the frontage road here than it's actually to the highway. I mean, we're going different speeds and, and two, but they've, uh, came to request that variance because of diminished their advertising.
Okay. Okay, quick question. Uh, we do have three items on executive session. Do you believe City Attorney, we're gonna need that, can we fit that in during our briefing session, or are we gonna have to go afterward? I guess we can wait and see how it goes. And we may push it to the end of the City Council rather than putting it in the end of briefing.
I think you have too many other items on item two mayor for us to handle your executive session.
So, will council just be prepared, we'll probably move it to the end of City Council rather than putting it where it stands on the agenda today. Okay. Very good. All right, moving on to item number two, briefings and presentations. First one up, uh, interim police chief, yes.
Sorry. Uh, I'd like to ask, we can move that presentation to the regular session? Commendations and presentations?
Which one?
The presentation of the new badge, badge review.
Move it to the City Council session?
To the regular session, yes. I just, significance of it, it's more ceremonial, uh, it's more, you know, more public will be out there, hopefully. So, just a request.
I'm glad with that.
Consent? All right, fine. Chief, you got that? Moving on to item 2B, briefing with an update to request the City of Dallas to amend the interlocal agreement for transportation of operations and maintenance, Mr. Ramey.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. This is a follow-up again to a briefing I presented to y'all, um, uh, last month regarding the Dallas signal. Um, I don't wanna belabor the, the background again, but we have a, or a interlocal agreement with Dallas that lays out which intersections each of us are responsible for. Um, and then we've been in conversation with the City of Dallas on trying to, um, figure out what, negotiate or any kind of partnership on the new road at, uh, new, proposed new signal at Clark and Summit Park on the Dallas side, and then Duncanville is at West Ridge. Again, this is, you know, Duncanville owns all the other signals on Clark. So, we had, you know, we had a bunch of meetings. Dallas presented in April their original plan, which was asking for Duncanville to provide some money to help with construction and then pick up the O and M for it in perpetuity, which, um, uh, in June 1st, we said that we weren't in a position to support that proposal. Um, and then on 13 July, we had to, between June 1st and 13 July, there was some other negotiations. But on 13 July, uh, I received a, a verbal proposal from the City of Dallas through the Director of Transportation. Basically, the City of Dallas said they will pay to construct it, they'll continue to maintain it. Um, basically, the only thing that they would be doing is putting some signal masks on the west, on the West Ridge side, Duncanville side. Um, and we would still need to update the ILA, I L A. And you'll see on this, uh, chart where they pick up the seventh, seventh intersection along the Duncanville border at Clark Road and Summit Park, West Ridge.
So, the bottom line is, City of Dallas has agreed to install it at no cost to the City of Duncanville?
Correct. And then they will maintain it at no cost to the City of Duncanville, and they'll just coordinate timing with us because we have the, you know, the signals to the north and south.
And I noticed in the staff report, it also said that the City of Dallas will maintain it in perpetuity.
Yes.
So, what you are looking for, what's, what staff is looking for is consent from this council to go ahead and go back to the City of Dallas saying, we agree with these two provisions.
Yes.
And then we'll have to change the I L A to reflect.
And to change the I L A.
That's right, an I L A.
Yeah, change the I L A to reflect these conditions now presented to us by the City of Dallas.
Yes, sir.
That didn't change any of our current, uh, responsibility.
Correct. So, the I L A basically says the City of Dallas is responsible for these, these intersections, City of Duncanville is responsible for these intersections.
We didn't switch out?
We started that conversation, but it became too much of a hassle, and so they just say it, we'll build it, we'll manage it, and let's not even focus on that, so.
So, so now we'll just say, instead of six to six, our I L A will say Duncanville, you have these six, and Dallas has these seven.
Chris, that was easy, but very good.
So, on behalf of the City Council, if staff would convey to the City of Dallas our thanks for understanding our fiduciary responsibility to our city. And that our initial decision not being able to fund this stands, and it's reasonable for us to take that position. We thank them for understanding and going ahead with this for their citizens on the Dallas side of Clark Road. Very good. Thank you very much, staff, for some good negotiations, really appreciate it. Item 2C, receiver presentation from the Duncanville Rotary Club regarding pavilion for Rotary Park.
I'll get the flipper here. You have a, any light?
Uh-oh.
Is there?
That's an element. Ilium neon light.
They don't work on the monitors, the laser pointers don't work on the monitor.
Good. I hate these lights. Uh, I'm Mike Meyer, I'm president of the Rotary Club again and again. In the, uh, spring of 2018, I was also president of the Rotary Club, and someone came up with the bright idea that we should put up a pavilion in Rotary Park. Seemed like a pretty benign thing to do, who would guess? Uh, I went to, uh, all the, the pavilions I could find in Duncanville, including the one at Grace Place, uh, Cedar Hill. Every place I could find a pavilion that within reasonable driving distance. And, uh, at that time, and that was before the, uh, the one at, uh, Fair, uh, the Lake.
Lake.
Lakeside.
Lakeside was, was built. Uh, I thought the best pavilion was actually, uh, at Redbird Park. But then they built, then y'all built Lakeside, and that's just great. Uh, far better than anything I could find in Cedar Hill or in, in the, uh, outline, the other communities. Uh, I, uh, I'm sorry. I, I went to, uh, you know, I, I looked around and heard people to sell us one, and, uh, we talked to five or six companies. Uh, none of them had much that I wanted to build. Did talk to Moller at, uh, Wuxihachi, and then who build similar buildings. And, uh, uh, got some designs from a architect and, and, uh, looked pretty good, kind of. And as I looked at it further and further, it just wasn't anything we'd be proud of, I didn't think. Uh, fortunately, COVID hit and crushed all my hopes and plans. Uh, I did present this idea to Parks and Rec, uh, Commission at that time and, and got a good response, but I really didn't like what we're doing as well as I thought we should. So, uh, now that we can be people again, uh, and, by the way, I'm now on my third term as president of the Rotary Club, so, uh, I really need some help because I'm getting kinda tired of being president of the Rotary Club. I need some help, need some relief. So, uh, we looked at the, uh, pavilion at, at Lakeside and, and, uh, and using that kind of as a model. Uh, I hired Randy Jacobs, who's an architect in, in Dallas, to come up with this plan. And what I wanna present tonight is this plan, and then talk about how we can do this together, the Rotary Club and the city. So, uh, this is kind of the way it's supposed to look, uh, at the, from the street. Y'all will notice the, the park, the playground area here, and there's another one back here. There's a, a little, a little public library around about here. Uh, and this would sit back from the street, but, and, and the parking lot is about here. Um, so. Wrong way. Uh-huh. So, looking at it from the, uh, front, uh, which would be standing on the, by the street, looking toward it. Uh, this is our concept of the way it would look. Uh, four pillars. Uh, the two furthest from the street are much larger so that from the street, uh, it looks, uh, larger. The whole thing looks a little bit bigger because of that. It holds, uh, six, uh, tables that are wheelchair accessible. It's about 38 by 39 feet. It's a little bit off of a square, but very close. Uh, and the area itself has about 1,340 square feet to it. Uh-huh. Uh, and it would be, uh, here's the new parking lot. Here's Venice Drive. Over here is Wheatland. Uh, it's a little creek back here. And it'd be a little bit in front of and just off to the side of playground here. There's a second larger playground here. This area here is about 1,380 square feet, or 40 square feet if you add this area. And then this is for a site, for a, um, I'm sorry, this, this area is for bicycles. Uh, there's, um, provision for six, um, bike stalls. Uh, and, uh, nine or eight, uh, picnic tables, uh, that are wheelchair accessible are these four. Are wheelchair accessible, actually, these other four also. Planters, a lot of, fair amount of stonework. This is the, uh, east side, this is the front of it. I could've gone backwards. No. This is like standing in the parking lot, the bicycle racks. Uh, more bicycle racks, more stonework. Looking from the north, so looking toward the parking lot. It would have, you know, a lot of stonework, uh, a lot of angles. Would really like the, uh, the general view. It's not as big as the one, of course, at, uh, Lakeside. But it's, 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 uh, it's pretty good size. Uh, and looking at the interior. The stonework's gonna be, uh, if you've been to the one at Grace Place, you've seen the stonework that they have there. Be something on that order. And again. And then just looking at it, uh, from a distance, we want to insist on a blue roof because that's, Rotary's color is blue. I mean, it'd be criminal to do otherwise. Uh, and then this is how it fits in with one of the playgrounds, uh, here, and the street is here. Uh, I only show this because, uh, we've gotta change, uh, this, but that's pretty easy to do. We just saw that off because, uh, you know, some kid's gonna get on here, jump up here and do something silly. That's just the nature of kids. So, that's our, what we'd like to propose, uh, what we'd, uh, like to discuss is how we can make this a cooperative arrangement between the city and the Rotary Club. And, uh, there are, well, that's, that's the main item I'd like to, uh, talk about.
Do you have a cost on this, Mr. Meyer?
Uh, yes. The, uh, uh, it'll take a slab just for the pavilion itself. Take slab, take a little bit, well, I've paid for the architect, architectural work so far, take another $1,000 worth of that, but slab. The building itself, the, uh, framework excluding the stonework. Uh, and then the stonework and the erection of the building are the costs. Uh, I anticipate, well, the, uh, area of the slab is about 1,340 square feet. And then with the area for the bicycles, it ends up being approximately 1,500 square feet. So, uh, at. So at commercial cost, that's about $12,500. The building itself is probably going to cost about $40,000 to $45,000. The construction got a bid for $7,000 to $8,000. And the stonework's probably going to be $8,000 to $9,000. We have a proposal how to share that cost, but have any questions about the cost? Okay.
Sir, does that include the parking lot? You said you were going to add a parking lot. Does that include?
No, the parking lot.
Oh, it's right there, okay.
No, we, we're thinking that there will be a day when there's a dog park across the street. And there'll be a day when that will also require a parking lot. Whether it's on this side of the street or the other side of the street is, you know.
So roughly what you just quoted, and I took the high figures of everything you just said, we're right at about $75,000, roughly.
It's a little bit less than that, but.
Well, as I said, everything you said, I took the high side, worst case.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think what Rotary Club is, or desire is so, is that the city take responsibility for the concrete slab, which, and the reason we think that is because y'all have a machine that makes concrete or mixes concrete. We would expect to pay for the structure itself and the erection of the structure, which are the big expenses. And then we could dicker over the stonework. Now, that assumes that the city would also put in water to the building and electricity. But that's pretty straightforward stuff.
Mr. Stevenson, your comments, please.
We've been talking to the Rotary Club about this project for, since 2019, I believe. And.
Yeah.
And this, I guess, desire the.
Every year they tell me, either get this done or we're going to elect your president again. So come on.
So we did set aside some money from the bond project, the parking lot, for extending the irrigation and doing some beautification for this project. The slab we had not talked about, as far as financially being able to support that part of the project. My comment to Rotary Club has always been that we need to get an engineering design to know what is going to be required to build that slab so we can kind of get a cost estimate. And then come back to you to decide if that's something that you want to fund.
I've talked to the engineer Randy Jacobs, who are the architects who drew this. And he thought the 1,340 square feet that I mentioned plus the bicycle lot, which brings it to about 1,500. And that would require four piers. I don't know how much concrete goes into a pier, but it's not a huge add-on.
It's a little off subject, but I need to bring it up just as a question. In terms of jurisdiction over the structure once it's completed, does that fall to Rotary for making reservations and maintenance and so forth? Or will that fall to the city for maintenance of the structure once it's tall?
Well, it's a city structure, they're a city structure. I think more, I think more interesting, I mean, it'd belong to the city. We don't, we don't own, we don't want to own a pavilion. That'd be kind of unusual.
I ask it, I ask it for public clarification, just so we understand.
The other, I think, question though is can we rent it for, to people for special events? And that's something that you can discuss, I think, ruthfully. Because I think it's going to be nice enough that you could consider that. And then the other thing is, why don't we sell rights to the picnic tables or any trees in the park? You get a tree, plant it, and cost plus 50%. And you get a brass plate in front of it.
So what's facing us as a council is some consent to ask for Mr. Stevenson and staff to continue to pursue this and bring something back to us for formal approval or formal consideration.
Well, I can't, yeah, that's what I really want from the council. But I've put in $2,800 of this project so far, which, of course, I don't mind at all. But I think there's a limit. I think you need engineering diagrams for the base of it. But, and the city may need to get their own estimates on how much it costs to put in a slab and the other components. But I think as Rotary Club, we've got to have some sort of commitment, excuse me, that before we, otherwise we're spending money on.
All right, well, my point, Dr. Minor, is that we as a council tonight need to give instruction to staff to either say, thanks for this, it looks pretty, but we're not going to do it. Or thanks, we think it might be a good amenity to add to Rotary Park for the city. And to ask staff to continue to pursue this, to lock it down, to come back to us for more information.
That's all.
And possible actual approval of any funds to go forward.
Yeah. All I want is a, is a staff, staff approval.
So, so our responsibility tonight, council, is to consider this. And do we want to table it? Or do we want to ask staff to, to, to take a look at this? Yeah.
I would look at it another way. First of all, thank you, Dr. Minor. Thank you. Great presentation and to the Rotary Club and all your efforts in doing it. I fully support what it looks like right now. I think there's a lot of more moving parts that we need to talk about and not just staff. I think we need to look at this from a, from a business perspective. And it means either workshopping this with the, with the council and with Rotary, working out some of the details with staff, or formalizing a task force with Rotary and with council, and parts of council and staff. And then coming back then with a presentation to council fully of what's been designed. There's too many questions here that I would have, and this great thought that's been proposed to us that would just slow the process down too much, other than pulling it out of this and work on it as a team.
I understand what you're saying, and as well. My comment was that we as a council need to consider to either move forward or stop this thing at this point.
No, that was, that was a comment to move forward.
While I'm saying that there are a lot of moving parts to this, there's no question. This is very superficial in terms of what we as a council, we as a city would have to consider. The dollars that have been put forward by Rotary in terms of the sharing, I think there's some, some good discussion has to go on there, some negotiations in terms of what Rotary wishes to do and desires to do, in terms of where this thing came from in the first place, going back to what, 2018?
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't know about it. I don't know if we need to spin our wheels on a task force. I think we have enough confidence in our staff to take a look at this. And if we feel that this is the right thing to do, whether this is the right picture or the right image for that pavilion, does it, does this pavilion as it's architected right now match the Lakeside pavilion? Because we want a consistent look of our pavilions throughout the city. If this is something extraordinary, something unique, that we don't have this kind of a look throughout, then this look is not something that we want.
Well, who says that? Who says we don't want that?
Say?
Who says we don't want that?
No, what I'm saying is that there's the term.
I heard what you said. I'm asking the question.
What needs to be looked at in terms of staff taking a deep dive into this thing.
I get that. I don't want for us to decide that it has to be a certain style. I think the Parks Department has done a great job of assessing that and coming to conclusions. And I really do apologize for interrupting that way, but that, it sounds like you're speaking for all of us when you say it has to look one way.
No, I'm not speaking for all of us. I'm making a comment as a member of the city council.
Okay, correct.
Not even as mayor.
Okay.
I'm making a comment as a member of the city council, just as Mr. Cooks made a comment as a member of city council. What I'm looking for is guiding some discussion to say, do we have, do we move forward with this? Do we have staff move forward to this? Are we happy with even the look and the thought of this as an amenity to our city? And say, thanks Rotary for bringing it to our attention. Yes, let's move forward, or no, we don't. That's all I'm doing here, Mr. Contreras, is guiding discussion. Yeah, Mr. Harvey?
So I suggest that we take it one step at a time and advise staff to look at it more closely and come back to us. And then we'll take additional steps based on the information that we receive at that point in time.
And that's essentially what I was attempting to say. Thank you for making it much more succinct. Mr. Barry Cruz.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Sheriff. I was going to say, thanks, Dr. Minor, for that. And absolutely, when he said he went around, it's going to be a unique structure and likes it a lot.
Well, it's modeled after the one at Lakeside. I mean, it doesn't have the same gables, but Lakeside was what we had in mind when we came up with this.
There's a lot of young families at that park these days, a lot moving in. And we definitely want to try to encourage them to, to take advantage of our parks. So I would definitely be in favor of moving forward.
Okay, Mr. Contreras.
So if we hand this back to you to do your assessment, what kind of turnaround time to get the engineering ideas for the piers and the concrete? What's the turnaround time for you to get back to us for that?
I think once we get information about the design of the slab, engineering design that's required, then we can get with our concrete crews as well, contractors, private contractors, to find out the cost, a cost estimate, I'm guessing. A month or two.
Okay. So with that, if you brought that back to us and we all agreed, let's say it worked out perfectly and we all agreed on it and council voted to move ahead, then what are we looking at in terms of when you would begin and end construction so they could start their end?
Well.
We're looking into next year?
I think for sure.
Okay.
So where do we come up the money just to do the engineering study?
I think that'll be part of our process is to determine possible funding sources for the project.
I still, I still think, again, I'm supporting the idea. I still think, though, there's much, much more to this, that we're going back and forth, back and forth, trying to resolve around a table versus having a smaller group, work with the Rotary, work with staff from a council perspective, or we as a council take it off on a workshop perspective. There's much more to this than what the staff is going to bring. And I'm going to hate to, when staff brings it, still have all these other questions that we could get answered during that time. So I'm supporting, yes, let's move it with staff, but moving with staff to say, let's also work as a unit from a workshop standpoint, from a whole council, or a unit with a task board to bring back to the council to work through this. There's contract stuff we got to talk about. There's, there's just a lot more to this other than staff bringing us back. Because honestly, they're bringing it back unless they can answer all those questions when you come back, you don't know what's on each council person's mind that may have a question that's going to require staff to go back and forth, back and forth. And I'm trying to remedy some of that back and forth.
Mr. Harvey?
So I think we have a task force already. I would call it the Park and Recreation Board. And then let them and staff and the Rotary bet all of these different considerations. And then they can come back to us, having betted on it and maybe even recommended, you know, one way or the other. And then from that point, we can take that recommendation and just like we do it, a lot of other things.
I have enough confidence in our staff, both the engineering side and the concepts side, to be able to work this out. As Mr. Harvey's explaining, we as a council, I'm sorry, Mr. Cooks, I can't agree with council being involved in a task force to look at this. I think we have enough competency and expertise within our staff to work this with Rotary, to come back with the design and come back with some cost to say this is what would be the best thing for both Rotary and the city to do. And then it comes to us for an approval. Yeah, Mr. Barry Cruz.
Just reminded that the land was donated in 1975, or specific things like this. Just something for information.
And again, we don't, so we don't even have that history. So I don't want, I don't want to know all of that history. That history makes a big difference. We don't, so when you bring it back to me, I'm going to say, if I'm in with history, what's going on?
As I said, well, I think reading what we get from our staff on all sorts of recommendations, it is replete with enough statistics and information. I think that what they're going to bring to us is going to be a competent study to say, this is what it can look like, this is what it's going to cost, and these are the engineering, these are the documents, this is the architecture, this is the utilities. I mean, Dr. Minor, you brought up utility, you know, that escaped me until you said it that way. Yeah, we got to have power, but, you know, we got to have water, maybe, for it was going to be a water fountain. But that's up to, that's up to staff to, to design this for what's best, highest and best use for this particular activity within this park structure. So what we're looking at, I believe, is hopefully we have some consensus to give the green light to staff to go ahead and study this further, bring it back to us at an opportune time when they have all the information necessary for us as a council to have a good structure, how it's designed, what it's going to cost, timeline, in terms of bringing it together, and how we're going to go about this.
One other question, Mark had outlined some of his questions that might be part of a discussion. Some of them may not be a discussion that Parks and Rec would normally have during an assessment like this. But provide them with some of the questions.
You can input that through, through an email to the city manager, give that to the Parks, Parks Board and staff, and so that can be discussed. And all those answers are going to be come forward when it comes to us. Yes?
One other thing, Dr. Minor.
Yes, sir.
Regarding your second issue about the presidency, if you'll let me know when it's time to run again and tell me who your opponent is, I have friends in Rotary, I'll work with them to make sure you get defeated.
The city manager, you have an understanding of what we're doing?
Absolutely. We will work with them. We'll follow up with all the members of council to get any other feedback. And we'll be working with the city attorney also in coming up with an agreement, specifically since this is a donation. And so you do have some things that you want to tie in and spell out very clearly, just like we just did with the city of Dallas in that agreement. We have to spell out what is our agreement with the Rotary in accepting this donation and accepting responsibility, as well as giving you actual cost of what the overall maintenance will be for the city in this. Okay?
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 2D, briefing on e-commerce sales tax rule requested by Mr. Cooks.
So Mayor and Council, as you are aware, we had a discussion prior to, during our workshop about the e-commerce sales tax rules and what's going on. I know that there's a lot of things happening at our state level. But one of the things that happened last year, and I will pass on copies, I think you all have this already, but is the. The state controller made a decision to change the way that they determine who receives the sales tax on e-commerce from a point of sale to a point of destination. And so this has been going back and forth. My last meeting on Monday, we had a conversation. Some of our neighboring jurisdictions are having to take some stance. We were asked, were we going to take a stance? For example, DeSoto, Lancaster, Capel, Round Rock, and Grand Prairie all impacted, that I can think of right away by it. One of the interesting is, there is a lawsuit that has been filed, some individually, some collectively with other organizations. We are not, these hubs generally focus on the fulfillment plants. And so when you see the warehouses along, the best example many people use is Dale. And Dale is a point-of-sale place based on they send computers to other places. And so part of the agreements which were made included something along the line of they would reimburse the sales tax to these folks for being there. Most recently, I think Lancaster just mentioned that their council chose not to join in the lawsuit because they did not want to be part, they didn't want to upset the Albert Park. But our, some of our neighbors, including DeSoto, Capel, Round Rock, and I think Grand Prairie's about to file, have also filed. Prairie's about to file, have also filed. We, when I was asked as far as a stance from our city, I, I did not go one way or the other, uh, but it is one of the things that I think Mr. Cook wanted to talk about if we wanted to take a stance, and our attorney may have, I don't know if he can, but the playing dual roles, uh, more information on this issue.
I, I, it's available. I haven't answered any questions. Capel, uh, is the city I represent, uh, we represent DeSoto as well, and the issue is really the point of sale. There, there was a case that the United States Supreme Court decided about two and a half years ago, it's called Wayfair. You know, and it's, i- if you buy anything online, you know, for a long time you didn't have to pay sales tax. And so the Supreme Court said, no, you have to pay a sales tax either at point of destination or at the point of sale. Either one's fine, uh, but you have to pay it somewhere along in the stream of commerce. So as a result of that, Glenn Hager then adopted three point three, 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 four, uh, which is a, um, reference to where that rules. And the rule's about a hundred and sixty pages. Anyone who wants to read it, be my guest, it's ad nauseam, boring at best. It, it boils down to, Texas has for the last eighty years been a state of point of sale, uh, state. So instead of you being taxed when you buy something in Duncanville, uh, you actually pay sales tax if you bought it in, uh, El Paso and it got shipped here in El Paso, gets the sales tax. The state of Texas really doesn't care because they get their six percent. So it's the two percent that funds your EDC. Cities like Dallas are probably awash, uh, city Houston's probably awash, they have as many citi, since they have so many citizens making purchases, uh, their warehouse, uh, loss revenue from point of destination now is somewhere else other than Dallas is made up for it by the fact that they make it up because they have a large volume of, uh, their citizenry that buys, and so it's point of destination, so they get their two percent. A city like Lancaster, for example, that has a huge amount of warehouse with small population is going to suffer a loss. A city of Capel's loss, I can share with you, because it's probably, it's twenty-three million dollars a year. So that will drastically change how Capel operates as a government.
So, is there any way we can quantify the impact on Duncanville?
We're the opposite. So, uh, this became really apparent, a lot of folks, as we talked about, is during COVID when things were shut down and people started to increase their online. Now, this doesn't affect all online. If you don't have a, a, a point of destination that is in Texas, then we're getting e-commerce. So when you see our budget numbers, you'll see Amazon Market. Those aren't impacted. It's just certain vendors that have a, a, I think, is it New Bronsville that has one? I'm not sure if they're Best Buy down there, that if you, if they're shipping from New York, if they stop there, then that spot that they stop in gets the sales tax versus if I...
There's a loophole in the law, and loophole is if you have a retail sales, uh, site in your city, they can designate that as a point of sale. So, we have, like in Capel, to give you an example, we have a Napa warehouse, which is huge, and they have a retail store in it. So the point of sale for those Napa online, uh, purchases will be still Capel. Uh, we have a huge container store facility which operates to, to, um, supply container stores throughout Texas is in Capel. They don't have a store at that location, and they've talked about opening one for the merest point to keep the point of sale in Capel. Because if you have a point of sale in your city, they can actually make that designation.
So if we look at the major manufacturers, Mr. Phillips, within our city, the quantification is zero for the, for the manufacturers that we have because of the products they produce and they're, they do not have point of sale. Now, in terms of looking to the future, we've got three hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet of warehouse space being built, and it's also, we do not know who the occupant is going to be, that's up to the builder. Now, it could come into play if that three hundred and fifty-four thousand square feet turns into something like the Napa warehouse, where somebody occupies that and puts a small point of sale store right in the corner of it, then all of a sudden, we're impacted. Uh, the question I think before us is, do we want to participate in a lawsuit where, quite frankly, I don't know that we have any skin in the game?
No, no, not, not necessarily lawsuit, but making a stance of how we, where we stand in the process. I mean, we're not, the lawsuits, we're not a part of that at all. We're saying...
What are the, what are your peers looking for from this, from the city?
Actually, this can come from my peers. At one time, uh, I think the question is, and I think you'll see this at TML, TML, I believe, has had to remain kind of neutral because as many cities who are losing, there are a lot more cities who will gain more revenue from this. And so, for cities like us that don't have the point of sales and we got all of the online sales, we don't actually know how much is coming to our city to quantify what the revenue increase would be for us. Uh, but the question is, from a neighboring standpoint, sometimes the best answer in, is to stay neutral, kind of like the mayor said, even with the new warehouse that would be built, is we never know when we would be in this. And so, uh, my statement to my peers was right now, I was just not in it. Uh, but I don't know how council feels because I know, I think it was Palestine that was really actively communicating about it, and they looked at a place that don't, that are not major warehouse and don't have a lot of things but have a lot of online sales, this would represent an increase in their sales tax. So, sometimes it's one of those where we don't know our impact, but we do support our neighbors and may want to stay neutral at this time. But for staff to continue to monitor this as it moves forward and as we start to research, figure out what that revenue means, uh, for the city or could possibly. But we are getting online sales revenue, it's just there are certain points that we will not receive, that we don't receive. So it's not money that we have coming in, it would be new money that would possibly come in if October first happens.
So your peers are looking from some statement of council that our consensus is to stand up or remain neutral?
I don't, I don't want to say, Sheriff, but I wouldn't really talk about just our peers, I'm just about, as a council, our statement would be, we'll just stay neutral. So I just, that's, that's really...
Well, that, that's what I'm asking. Is it, yeah, have, our statement, is this statement going to be simply, this is how we decided here at council, it's gonna go into the minutes? Or is somebody that we don't know yet looking for something in writing that I'm gonna have to sign or you're gonna have to sign?
Uh, I didn't receive the request from them. When they asked me, were we going to act on it, I did not. And I think when I sent out the information, as it says in there, Mr. Cook asked for you all to have an opportunity to discuss it. But I will say that, uh, just to give you the feedback, Lancaster, who is impacted, council did not put it before a vote because they did not know which way it would go. And so, I think my, my recommendation right now as city manager would be, let's continue to monitor this, and if it gets to a point where I think it's time to take a stance, then we would do something.
So we'll let the minutes reflect the matter was discussed at council, and council at this point determines consensus for coun, council's consensus is that the city of Duncanville remain neutral on this matter. Does that work?
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, very good. Uh, folks, we are at seven. We've got one more to go. So, Mr. Cooks?
I think one more goes really easy, 'cause, uh, that's really just staying within the standard. So city manager, can we talk about holidays real quick?
Uh, I've got this gentleman right here who's prepared to tell you real quick about state holidays.
Very quickly, we, the city of Duncanville observes ten holidays. These are the same ten holidays that our best southwest cities observe. Um, and none of us, none of the best southwest cities are in discussion to add or eliminate or change any of their holidays at this time.
Good.
So...
With the, with the new holidays coming, I know the state of Texas adopted Juneteenth and will be adopting others. I was just trying to line that up where we aren't going back in between with making recommendations if it's a holiday or not holiday.
So I can tell you, we're part of an HR consortium group, um, we participate with, um, HR groups throughout the whole state, and it's kind of mixed right now. Northern Texas cities, there's about forty-three percent who are, June nineteenth and some other holidays, but the majority of cities still have not officially adopted that. So, you know, that's not something that we have discussed, so, you know, that's something that council wants to discuss that and ask us to observe, then we can certainly do so. There are no direct costs for adding a holiday, but there are indirect costs. So to take one whole day off with our full-time employees that have been green, it costs about sixty-two thousand dollars. So that's if you add another holiday. If you supplant it with another one, then there's no cost differential. So that would be something that, you know, if council guides us to further study that that we can or potentially adopt that, then discussions.
Okay. All right, then I'll just, I'll wait and bring it back to council to see if it's something we want to do, and I've just followed the state mandate of, of the holidays, should we adopt it or not.
I looked on the states, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I looked on the state site and they, on their site, it still doesn't show that they officially observed Juneteenth, unless it was an old page.
It's an old one. They, state has always observed Juneteenth, the federal holiday just came into effect. So it is a new federal holiday and it's an old state holiday.
Right.
So we'll, I'll just, I'll, I'll put it back and just move back, back to the situation with me.
Put it off, just, yeah, retract.
Okay. Okay. Uh, the, uh, that concludes our briefing presentation. Report on our agenda, the time is officially seven o'clock.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm calling to order the regular city council session for the City of Duncanville City Council on July the twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you for your attendance and for everyone being here tonight. As a matter of information, in terms of time for everyone involved, we are going to move the executive session that is in the middle of our agenda to the very end of our meeting tonight. So it's not to delay you folks that have come, but if you want to stay as we go through the entire executive session and come back in, you're more than welcome to. Uh, but in terms of deference to you and your time... We just wanted to, uh, to, to respect that, to let you know what's, how we're gonna be timing the agenda. So... Very first thing that we have is the invocation, and that will be given to us by Reverend Dr. Ginger Hertenstein from the First Presbyterian Church. Pastor.
Please rise.
Mayor Gordon, council members, leaders, and citizens, please bow with me in prayer. God, we bow our heads with intention tonight as people who acknowledge that we can forge ahead on our own or humble ourselves and ask for your direction. We choose the latter, envisioning the good things which guidance from your hand might accomplish. We come to you, God, with a sense of call, for you place certain people in certain places at certain times to fulfill roles as you see fit for the benefit of our community. You care about cities and neighborhoods, citizens and their leaders. Our lives as leaders are not about accolades but about serving one another. Tonight, as this council takes up its work, considers a work on the budget and other items, guide them, help them appropriate citizens' revenue wisely with purpose and a sense of responsibility. Help their decisions to be balanced between the needs of people and commerce and of a functioning city. Give them an attitude of prosperity, not scarcity, and the faith to move forward when change is needed, for you, God, can see the future. We, however, have limited vision, so help us. Help us, God, to recover from the effects of the pandemic, for you have the power of hope and healing. As we analyze and interpret our streets, as we look at ourselves with clarity, let us see the assets we have. As we trust you, you will embody our work. Thank you, God, for what you have given us, and as people of faith, we look forward to your unfolding answer. As a minister of good news, I pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in pledges to our flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and justice for all. Honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Moving on to item number one on our agenda is reports, and mayor's report, city council members' reports, the city manager report. Uh, just two quick things, uh, from myself, that while we have already initiated meeting in person, the governor did suspend the emergency declaration allowing city councils and open meetings to meet virtually. That is effective the first of September. Uh, but we are already in person, so that doesn't affect us, but I just wanted to pass that on in case you're curious about any particular thing. Uh, that suspension goes into effect one September. Second thing I'd like to mention is that council member Cooks and I were privileged to be in Armstrong Park, well, I think, uh, city manager, uh, Farrell Benavides was there as well. Uh, in Armstrong Park this Saturday, a ministry called Legacy Builders put on a kids entrepreneur event, I guess is the best way to say it. Uh, young children from the ages of, my goodness, there was a third grader there and there was a seventh grader there, and they have businesses already established of their own. They are turning income. Uh, one individual has published four books. He's in the seventh grade, I believe, and they're on Amazon and Barnes and Noble already. And interestingly, those books, one of the books is on how to invest in the stock market.
That's right.
So, uh, we were, it's, it's so, I think, I, I'm not sure if, if Mark said it to me or not, but it was that there's such a focus in the media on bad kids, and here we have a whole group of kids being mentored and discipled into entrepreneurship and seeing how business in the marketplace operates in America today. It was just a very, very heartwarming thing, uh, to talk to these kids. So with that, uh, turn it over, let's see, uh, Mr. Cooks, I see your light on.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. A good evening. I just wanted to make a couple of announcements really quick. One, uh, I also agree with the mayor, mayor, great event, uh, the Stock Market book was a great book as well that I purchased while I was there and other items. Uh, this coming Saturday, we have the Meet, Connect, and Learn. Uh, the subject title this month is Duncanville Women in Business, I'm sorry, Duncanville Women in Business: Building Success in Our City. And so I've identified at least six women-owned businesses in Duncanville that we will highlight and talk to about their success in Duncanville. Uh, you will see their pictures on the online website, so if you're available, please drop in and hear our business owner, women business owners talk about their success here in Duncanville, which, which I hope is an encouragement for others to, uh, move to Duncanville and start your own business. Uh, two things, and then I'll end with a short, uh, video that will, in my timeline, is that we have, uh, a young lady that was in our District Four who actually went to the Olympics, and I want you to be aware of that. Her name is Ariel Atkins. She's, uh, U.S. Women's Basketball, the shooting guard who graduated from Duncanville in twenty fourteen in Texas, and twenty eighteen is already a WNBA All-Star champion. Uh, this summer, she's primed to add Olympic gold mellish to her career and accolades, lives with Team USA. So at the end of the presentation, I'll show you what we cheered her on. Uh, so congratulations to Ariel Atkins. Her, her parents is also the owner of Wayne, Wayne's &amp; More on Cedar Ridge, and so just know they're a business owner, as well as we have an Olympic champion gold in our city in the name of Ariel Atkins. And then, uh, councilman Coontz and I, uh, participated in a bike ride, and I want you to see a video of that bike ride. We're gonna always encourage you that, uh, when you're successful and ready, that we will ask you to, uh, whether it's an e-bike or whether it's a pellin bike, join us in cycling. And so we'll end with the presentation, so if you have... And so we'll end with the presentation. So if you have.
Hello.
Duncanville in hell.
Alright, let's go. Not quite. Yes.
And while that is going, it's also recognize our council member Greg Contreras. He was our poop out truck, and he had to pick up at least one person. So Councilman Contreras, thank you very much. You're, you're, you're really helpful. Here's our last one.
Hello, this is Mark Cook, your city council member. On behalf of the city of Duncanville, we want to tell you congratulations and go Duncanville!
Alright, thank you. That was for Ariel Atkins, who's our U.S. Women Basketball team in Duncanville. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Mr. Vera Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to our independent school district for being selected School Board of the Year in, uh, Region 10, which makes them eligible for, um, the state. And so there'll be five, uh, school districts competing. And so I know we have Mr. Jackie Colton here with us who, uh, represents them well, and we would just want to congratulate them. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. And please, on behalf of our city council, please extend our thanks and congratulations to Dr. Smith, Dr. Nix and the rest of the staff. Thank you. Seeing no other city council members' reports, city manager.
Mayor and council, I'd like to start by acknowledging a new member of our team who joined the economic development team, Mr. Clay Mencel. Uh, he is a graduate of the University of Texas at Dallas with his master's in public administration, originally from Houston, Texas, and he's joined to work with Gus on several projects. And I think we'll see great things to come and I'd like to acknowledge that. Uh, last, uh, the Parks and Recreation Department and Police Department will be hosting Catfish Catch and Fishing with a Cop. A kid-friendly, uh, fishing derby on Saturday, July 31st, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Lakeside Park. No experience is necessary, and there will be a limited amount of supplies available for use. Hope to see you there. That concludes my update.
Thank you, city manager. Next item on the agenda, item number two, proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation. This is a proclamation designating July as Parks and Recreation Month. I will read this, and Mr. Bart Stevenson, come up and accept, please. Uh, let's move over here and get away from that thing. Alrighty. Whereas Parks and Recreation Programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the city of Duncanville. And whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community in region. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation Areas are fundamental to the envi- environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Natural Recreation Areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation Areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Duncanville recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation Resources. Therefore, I, Mayor Gordon, Mayor of the city of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2021 as Parks and Recreation Month. Congratulations, Mr. Stevenson. Noel, another.
Thank you, Mayor, council. On behalf of the men and women of the Parks and Recreation Department, including all the part-time and the full-time staff at the Recreation Center, the Senior Center and the Fieldhouse, we thank you for this honor. Uh, I'm so proud and humbled to be a part of a professional team that does an incredible job on a day-in and day-out basis here in Duncanville, so thank you. I have with me Noel Garcia. He's our Recreation Superintendent. And I have Danny Johnson, who's our, uh, Parks Maintenance Manager. Uh, Timothy Hamilton is on vacation, otherwise he would be here, but, uh, thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. Okay, folks, um, I'm not, I'm not firing on all eight cylinders at the moment, uh, so not going anywhere. Just, uh, going to take a, a break while I'm here, and I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Harvey to, uh, take care of the business of reading the citizen inputs. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have, uh, some citizen comments. And as our practice is, we will, I will read them just as, uh, they are written. Okay. Thank you, Mark. Okay, citizen's input pursuant to Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. Any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the Act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research in any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council-adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. Uh, to speak during citizen comments, you must register with the city secretary before 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. Email citysecretary@duncanville.com and title the email Public Comments July 20th. You will need to register with the link below and attend the meeting. During the citizen comment period of the agenda, the city secretary will call your name and allow access, uh, to your camera and microphone for you to provide your comments. Uh, feel free to email your comment to the city secretary for the mayor to read into the record for any unexpected technological issues that may arise. Uh, the city secretary will si- still set a two-minute time limit on the comments as they are read. Okay. And with that, uh, we do have some written, um, citizen comments that I will read. Uh, this one. Ms. Downs, the following is for tonight's public comment portion of the council meeting. My family and I have lived here in Duncanville for about 10 years. One of the great things about Duncanville has been that it has kept a pretty clean appearance. But lately, it seems like the appearance of the parks, streets and natural areas are starting to decline. The intersection of I-20 and Cockle Hill Road is basically an entrance into Duncanville. I pass through there every day on my way to and from work, and more often than not, there is trash on every corner of that intersection. I've seen trash in the grassy middle section of the road and also hanging from the streetlights or signs. My, my wife likes to go running through the parks, and she has commented on how the parks aren't as clean as they used to be. She has spotted items like food, Coke cans and even condoms. Try explaining what that is to an eight-year-old. We are asking the city to do a little more to maintain the clean appearance it has had in the past. The city can host events where the citizens can volunteer their time and clean some of these overlooked areas. Maybe call it something like Keep Duncanville Clean. Best regards, Fernando Robledo. Uh, next comment, please read my comments at the meeting. There has been a lot of discussion about on-street parking and the issues it creates on Nextdoor. One post in particular mentions the stretch of Oriole through the Fair Meadows neighborhood. It has attracted 58 comments so far. I'll address the parts of my neighborhood where this is a problem. On-street parking has become a major issue for some parts of Duncanville. The problem spots in our neighborhood are along Calder, near the Sunset Villa Apartments and the Meadows on Merrill Avenue, particularly on Fame. The cars line both sides of the street, making it possible for only one car to pass through at a time. This is also a safety issue. Having a large amount of cars obstructs the view. It makes accidents more likely in those streets where on-street parking is heavy. This is difficult to navigate for novice drivers and those who drive larger vehicles. My sister had her mirror knocked off when she was parking on the street in front of our house. Our house is at a bend in the road. If a large vehicle parks in front of our house, it is impossible for us to see traffic coming from Oriole, traveling down East Davis toward Maine. I encourage the city council to take up a discussion and consider some changes to our on-street parking ordinances to make our neighborhood safer. Amy Christensen, 311 East Davis Street. The next one, to Duncanville City Council, subject overcrowded streets, uh, due to parked cars. As a 46-year resident of Duncanville, I am writing this to express my continually growing frustrations and concerns related to the number of cars parked on our residential streets. Was that my time limit? Okay. Now I'm substituting now. Okay. I can only speak for my area of the city, Forest Hills, as I travel these streets the most. The number of cars that are now parked on the Forest Hill streets has grown exponentially and has now created a huge safety factor for drivers, as well as emergency vehicles, as there is very little room to navigate the sea of cars. In the evenings and weekends, there's, there is no room for visitors to park, and at times, they have had to walk half a block to get to my front door. In the past, parked cars have been damaged or side mirrors broken due to narrow drivelanes. Many times, if cars headed in both directions meet, one has to back up, hoping not to hit a parked car. As you know, Forest Hills has rear-entry garages slash driveways. I have always wondered why folks prefer to park out front. I will provide photos, but I know that we are all aware of the issue. As this is a growing problem across the city, I hope the council can develop a plan to address this issue. Thank you to your service for the cities, to the citizens of Duncanville, Greg Reno, 735 San Juan Drive.
Hello, Duncanville City Council. Thank you for taking my comments. My name is Teresa Harris. I am 11 years old, and I have lived in Duncanville since October 2011. I am a junior girl scout working on my get-moving leadership journey, and I have visited many of the Duncanville parks in the last few weeks. First, I would like to say thank you for the new park rule signs and for the bike lane markings on the streets. My family loves to bicycle around Duncanville. The new street markings make Duncanville look very bike-friendly. Second, I would like to share my concern with you. I have two younger siblings who are not ready to ride bikes on the streets of Duncanville. When we visited Armstrong and Redbird Park, we saw two signs. One with park regulations and another with larger font emphasizing no bicycles in park area. Both parks have nice pedestrian lanes, which would be ideal for families with young kids to learn how to ride bikes before going on the bike lanes here in Duncanville. Lyons Park and Waterview Park also have pedestrian trails. However, they do not have signs with large font discouraging bicycling. On the Duncanville Park and Recreation website, all four of these parks have a note. Trails are pedestrian only, no bicycles allowed, in the features slash amenities section. My request is that the signs at Armstrong and Redbird Parks be permanently removed and the websites for all four parks be updated to reflect that Duncanville is bike-friendly. Thank you for your time and attention in this manner, Teresa Harris. In recognition of July as Parks and Recreation Month, I thank all employees plus the litter crews for maintaining our park system. Maintenance of the park often involves more than mooring and trash pickup, such as ducks getting caught by fishing hooks at Lakeside Park. Per Nextdoor post this past week, two ducks at Lakeside Park have hooks in them, and city staff are currently trying to rescue them. We all remember that our animal control successfully rescued a duck with a fish hook last year. One Nextdoor post this week said that fishermen come from other cities day and night to fish with six to 10 poles instead of the two-pole limit and catch many more fish than the five-fish limit. This, that leaves few fish for Duncanville residents. Attached, for your references, the PDF of Nextdoor post. Uh, attached is photo of a park sign with a two-pole limit and a five-fish limit and fishing license required for 17 years of age and above. So today, about 2:00 p.m., I walked Lakeside Park near the pond and saw two fishermen, all with two poles, except one fisherman with three poles. I saw three fishermen had containers with fish, but I did not see how many fish. All fishermen were 17-plus, but I do not know if they had fishing licenses. What is the park staff experience with fishing at Lakeside Park? This is from Patricia Ebert, 115 South Greenstone Lane, 75116. Picture. You think that's it? Okay. Oh, that's the last one? Okay. Okay. Okay, um, this is from-
This is from GW Smithy Jr. And so, Mr. Smithy, will you come up and state your name and address for the record? And you'll have two minutes.
GW Smithy Jr., 1806 Cedar Hill Road. Duncanville resident since 1950, when I was six years old. Been a while, but I want to commend you guys on doing something here tonight. And I know that you're not used to seeing me commend you. I've been over here and asked you to do something that you don't want to do. But tonight, I want to commend you. I want to commend you on going in with the Rotary Club to do something that we should have done, you know, but long before now, probably. This city unfortunately has a history of not being very park-friendly. It was this long, hard fight with a short stick to get parks done in this city hardly at all. The vote to do the only big park we'll ever have, Harrington Park, was a three-to-two vote. I was on the park board at the time. We lobbied like you wouldn't believe to get those three votes. I didn't think we were ever going to get much anything in terms of parks here. The city manager, Marcus Harrington, I had a big fight one night after council meeting, and he said, "We got good parks." I said, "Marcus, you know, you're 65 years old. You don't know, you don't use them." And he didn't. And we were sitting on the dice with the governor. And I turned around to his son, who was sitting beside me, and I said, "Do you think your dad's turned over in his grave thinking about how much money we spent on this park?" And he said, "I know Doug O'William." And that's how difficult it was to get any parks done. So I want to commend y'all for going in with the Rotary Club on this. And I'm sure you can work out some sort of reasonable situation between the two. I have a lot of faith in y'all. I think, you know, y'all are all reasonable people. Reasonable people can come to good conclusions. And it's not a good conclusion to turn down an offer from a Rotary Club or any other club when they want to help you do something in your city and they want to pay part of it. So consequently, I just want to come up and say thank you for your consideration.
Mayor Pro Tem Harvey and Mayor Gordon, we need to do the patch reveal that Councilmember Cooks wanted to move in, or Coontz wanted.
Yes, I made it know that. But I was going to do it during... Yeah, I was gonna... I had it on my notes to start it out for items for individual consideration, but best to do it now for our two consents. Okay, okay. So for members or citizens that were not available or present when we, in our briefing session, one council member did request that an item in our briefing session be moved to the open city council so there'd be better understanding of it in publication. So the item on the Police Department Patch Reveal is now being presented to the entire council and city. Thank you, Mr... We have interim police chief Mark Levigny. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And first, I would like to thank Councilmember Coontz and the rest of the council for giving us this opportunity. And let me take a step back. We had a lot going on this summer. We had a great Fourth of July event on the third this year. And in our haste, we provided the council, we weren't sure if we were going to get the material that we needed to provide the council and our city management, the patch. But we did in time, but we didn't have time to get it on an agenda. So I want to thank you, Councilmember Coontz, to give us this opportunity. And without further ado, we'll reveal the patch. So background regarding the new patch design was, this will be the fourth patch the Duncanville Police Department has worn in its history. The department was established in 1959, and you can see there the patch that we originally wore. And then the patch, the second patch from 1977 to 2000, I wore that when I was hired from '93 to 2000. And then this third patch that we're moving on from, we wore since 2000 up until 2021. Now, the impetus for the new patch was in 2019 when the council adopted the new city logo. And they asked us at that point, or I guess I should say directed us at that point, once our inventory of our current patch was exhausted, to come up and incorporate the new city logo into a new patch. So that's what we've done. And there it is, as I wear it on my sleeve today. And it is an iconic symbol for any police department. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to reveal it.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions of the chief? Thank you so much. And we do like the incorporation of the new logo. It looks sharp, and we're very proud of all of our law enforcement individuals that have the honor of wearing that patch. Thank you for all that you do.
Chief, I like that it's so large that even Greg Concherish can read it from here.
Moving on to item number four on the agenda, the consent agenda. City Secretary, would you please read the consent agenda items?
4A, consider a resolution rejecting all bids received from IFB-21-0012 rebuild chlorine room at North Main Elevated Storage Tank, providing for appropriate notice and providing for authorization to rebid. 4B, consider a resolution approving the proposal for city-paid employee and retiree medical and prescription plan with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for a one-year agreement. 4C, consider a resolution authorizing the execution of the third option to renew the purchase agreement with US Venture Inc., DBA US Oil through the Tarrant County Cooperative Purchase Contract Number 2018-057 in the expenditure amount of $351,000. 4D, consider a resolution authorizing the award of bid IFB-21-013 to Peachtree Construction LTD for Mill and Overlay Number Two in the amount of $385,967.89. 4E, consider a resolution approving the Sign Control Board grant for a variance of extra storage space, storage, extra space storage, allowing a highway sign to be erected at the height of 70 foot at 303 East Highway 67, Duncanville, Texas.
Thank you, City Secretary. Chair of entertaining motion to approve.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Harvey. Please vote. Thank you, council. Moving on to item 5A, items for individual consideration. Item 5A, consider a resolution requesting the Texas Department of Transportation, Tech Stot, amend the design for Project CSJ 2374-04-085 by deleting the proposed Texas U-turn bridge at northeast side of the existing Cockro Hill Road overpass along US 67, requesting a Texas U-turn bridge at the southwest side of Cockro Hill Road overpass along US 67, and requesting a Texas U-turn at the north side of Daniel Dale Road overpass along US 67. Mr. Ramey, Director Public Works, floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So again, tonight is a resolution in summary to, again, counsel a proposed U-turn on Cockro Hill Road that Tech Stot is planning to do on their upcoming I-20 project, as well as finalizing, again, and more formalizing of requests that have been made periodically from the city to Tech Stot regarding Texas U-turns in areas that do help the city of Duncanville. So again, going back to September 2016 was the first letter that we sent to Tech Stot regarding Texas U-turns, again, at Cockro Hill and at Daniel Dale. This was tied to, with the intent of trying to get these U-turns incorporated in the US 67 widening project, which, as you all know, just finished a few months ago. Again, the intent was to circulate traffic within Duncanville. In November, we got a response saying that the widening project had already been designed, and so it was too late at that time, but they would reevaluate for a later project. In 2017, we started the planning for the green ribbon landscaping project along the corridor. So at that time, we presented a master plan for the corridor. We presented designs to the corridor, which included Gateway at Cockro Hill. And we received $1.2 million for landscaping that would be between the Cockro Hill Gateway and then at the Wintergreen Gateway. And as you see on the slide following me, Ms. Colton, my, the assistant director, will be bringing the green ribbon contract for your consideration tonight, and we'll see the implications or how this conflicts with that green ribbon design. So in July of 2020, Tech Stot emailed me the schematics for their new work along I-20 between Cockro Hill and Hampton Road, and I will show you those designs. Again, their focus was utility deconfliction along the I-20 corridor, which there are no impacts to Duncanville. But then in April of 2021, I got the 60% designs from Tech Stot for our review, and that's when we noticed that the, a bridge, a U-turn bridge on the Dallas side, or, you know, that favors Dallas, was incorporated into those designs, which put us in a pinch. So what I want to do now is, I've got a sort of a big overarching picture that I'll point out, and then we'll sort of deep dive into different areas, some for your situation awareness, but also so that you can understand how the current planned U-turn on 67 at Cockro Hill will negatively impact the design that we've been working on for the last four years at that location. So what you'll see along I-20 in yellow is the area of construction along that corridor. It starts on the east side of Cockro Hill Road on the Dallas side, goes across 67 vicinity the new Redbird Development. And then you see down at Hampton Road where, like, the Raising Canes and Target gets a Texas U-turn. And then when you look down in the bottom-left corner by, at R-67 and Cockro Hill location by QuickTrip, there's other, there's another Texas U., again, on the northeast side of that intersection, or that exit. So again, just as we sort of deep dive by section, the part that's in Duncanville is really just a rework, or a reconstruction, I should say, of the off-ramp there to Cockro Hill, Cockro Hill Road. There is no shifting to that location. The bridge is actually, abutments really preclude anything else other than just recreating the off-ramp at that location. And then you can see, again, the Texas U-turn that is on the east side of Cockro Hill Road on I-20. Moving further east, this is the new service road slash overpasses that basically take the service road over 67, again, right there to facilitate more access to the new Redbird Development. And then moving all the way to the east, that's a misaligned there, but again, what you're seeing is another U-turn to facilitate that area by the Target and Hampton Road. Again, now moving to the south, you'll see the current design for a Texas U-turn on the east side of Cockro Hill Road, right there by, again, the QuickTrip and the McDonald's and where the old Luby's was located. And so what I want to really highlight is the impacts of this bridge for your consideration. As you see on the top map, again, it's just sort of a box blowing, which the blow-up is on the bottom of the, this drawing. What I do want to highlight is, again, you see the two opportunity areas that are in this vicinity. Opportunity Area 1 is on the northwest side of 67, and Opportunity Area 2 is on the southeast side. Now, looking at the bottom, what you see is, we asked the Jacob Kocher landscape architects to overlay the proposed Texas U-turn against their design for our gateway. And the areas in yellow with the red X's out is all the lost landscaping associated with this, if this U-turn were constructed. And basically, what you see, the star, as you're coming into town from Dallas, so this is like our main entrance to the city, we have very limited landscaping as our main entrance. And again, this was planned for the million dollars of gateway improvements. And as you see, we lose pretty much everything, but when you zoom in, it's basically four trees are behind, is all that's behind the monument sign. There's nothing else. And then just some landscaping, again, as you continue further south on 67. And then, again, just another blow-up of the area showing the recommended locations. As you remember from the resolution, we were asking Tech Stot consideration for U-turns at Cockro Hill and Daniel Dale that would help traffic circulation within Duncanville, specifically between these two opportunity areas. And that's what we've highlighted here in yellow for your consideration as well. So again, our recommendation that we ask council is to approve the resolution to amend the design, to remove the Texas U-turn that's currently part of the I-20 service road project, as well as formalizing our request for those other, for their consideration for those other U-turn bridges at Cockro Hill and Daniel Dale. Are there any questions?
I'll start. Mr. Ramey, is it fair to presume that your objection to what they're proposing has already been voiced to Tech Stot?
Yes, sir. I had, when we first saw the April design, the 60%, I called Tech Stot just to confirm that that was part of the I-20 project because I had not seen that in July. We tried to our best to deconflict our design with that U-turn. But again, at the time that we found out in April, the bid for the green ribbon project as designed was already on the street. In fact, it opened a few days after we had our first conversations. And so in my conversations with Tech Stot, mine have been at the area engineer level, which is the folks that are in charge of this area. What they had asked is something from us, the city of Duncanville, expressing our desire to eliminate that bridge from the project. It was something I just couldn't do on my own.
Did they understand the validity of the objection, that it was not something emotional, that it was really quantitated in terms of the detriment of what they were proposing would be to the city versus the advantage of what you and the staff are proposing to do?
What I explained to the area engineer was that we had a significant investment at this location that we had been working with Tech Stot for four years to put a gateway at this location, and it had gone all the way through the area office, the district office, all the way to the state office for approval of the design that did not incorporate a U-turn bridge. And so we, I expressed our concern that, where did the bridge come from? It was not, you know, why did it come up? You know, during the entire design review process? Because, again, I told them that we were pending a bid award, you know, a few days after, you know, we found out about it.
So in reading the package, if I understood correctly, they understand your objection, the city's objection to what they're doing, and they are now simply requesting something from the council to formally inform Tech Stot of our objection to what they're proposing?
They understand that we do not, we object. They understand that we do not, we object, yes, sir, and they are waiting for something from us. I would not deign to understand the bigger picture behind why that was there. So all I know is that we will take the resolution and go to Tech Dot with our position and how it negatively affects the main entrance to our city, and again, the million dollar gateway that has been funded and approved by Tech Dot, which would be adversely impacted by that bridge, yes, sir.
So no statements from the Tech Dot engineer in terms of their acceptance of what we're saying, they just want to see something in writing, I presume?
That's, as far as the conversations that I have had at my level with the area engineer, who is my counterpart, with the resolution from council, that will then allow myself as well as the city manager to engage at the higher level, at the district level, which is typically outside of my purview. That's usually when I bring in the city manager.
So that re-engagement hopefully then would bring a new design that would be to the city's advantage, hopefully. I mean, you can't speculate positively or negatively, but that would be the hopeful outcome. The Tech Dot would recognize this objection and redesign something more to our agreement.
I will tell you with my conversations is that the best that we will get in terms of project as part of this I-20 project that's referenced is that it would be deleted. That particular bridge was at 95% design. They're looking at awarding the I-20 project, service road project in December. So I do not believe that they will flip that bridge on the opportunity side. This would be something that would have to come by later, sir.
Okay. That's, I guess, that's where my question was leading. If, you know, if we object to this, would they then accept redesigning? And the answer to that is no, it's going to be a pure deletion and something else would have to come forward.
If we had known sooner, we probably, when they started the project, we could have adjusted fire at that time, or made different plans. But right now, what I've been told is it's, the deletion is the, probably the best that we can hope for under this job, given their timeline of awarding the bigger project as shown along I-20 in five months.
Right, okay, thank you. Mr. Cooks?
Yeah, Greg, did they explain why they made that certain switch?
Why they added that Texas? They did not explain it to me. As I look at it, what my impression of why those are all there is to help channel and bring more traffic to the Redbird Development that is underway, sir.
That's exactly what I thought. So it would benefit the new project that Dallas is doing at the Redbird area?
It would, it would help Dallas, yes, sir.
So you're saying by us approving that we object to this, they'll look at it. Is there any other appeal process after then, other than just consider, is there, what's the next step from that, from that one person just looking at it or a group?
Well, my, my plan, again, as I've mentioned, that this is something we do not want. I've communicated that to the area engineer. I know that the district engineer is aware of that from, you know, through my conversations. And so the next steps was take the resolution from council and working with the city manager, engaging at the district level and...
The district level is going to be like who?
That would be Mr. Mober for the entire Dallas area, the entire area.
With who I am acquainted and have a professional relationship.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm still just, still concerned that, I knew it was for a benefit for some reason, and I don't think we just sit on this and just let the resolution, you send it and that's it. I think we need some type of stronger stance, whether it be your meeting, or a meeting with us, or the council, or someone, because that decision was made intentionally, it sounds like, to benefit not our city, and that should concern all of us, and I know it does, but...
Well, it's speculation that it was, I think you're right. I looked this over, and I came to the same conclusion, that it looked like it was to benefit the redevelopment of Redbird. But, you know, I think what we need to carry this forward so that I and Greg and city manager have some cogent ammunition to talk to engineer Burr, is to have this resolution in hand.
I'll agree with that.
That council has said this is where we stand, and then I would be more than willing to accompany Greg and Aretha to a meeting with Mober and take this up and find out what we can do to do something to benefit our city. We need this ammunition in hand.
Yeah, we don't, we only, we not only need this ammunition, we're going to probably need more than that. This is probably one of those ones that we're going to need a real strong push from any other partners that we can get to make this work, because that's, that's just unacceptable at all. But, no, I agree with the, with the resolution. I just wanted to ask those questions, knowing that I knew the answer already to it.
Yeah, fair questions, fair questions, definitely. Mr. McNabb?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ramey, if they do the other proposal, which you had for opportunity areas, does that have any effect on what currently is going on in Daniel Dell?
In terms of, well, let me just zoom in, that probably helps for communication. So what we are doing on Daniel Dell actually would have no conflict, sir. So that would be a new bridge at that location, and all our improvements on that Cockro Hill Bridge, or Dan, Cockro Hill Bridge, well, let me back up, sorry, let me go to this one. Sorry, looking at Daniel Dell. So again, that is a new bridge. Our improvements on Daniel Dell are on the existing bridge in terms of the striping, restriping, and the delineators, and our work is primarily focused only on Daniel Dell. And so I do not envision a Texas U-turn at Daniel Dell having any impact on our improvements on Daniel Dell, sir.
All right, seeing no further discussion, I think we pretty well understand the position that we, as the council, need to take. So the chair will entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Some move?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and we do have a second. Council, please vote. Thank you. It passed unanimously, and when there is an opportune time, let me know, and we will certainly take this matter up forward. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 5B, consider, I want to take this one.
Moving on to item 5B, consider a resolution concurring with the city of Cedar Hills' recommendation to award the US 67 green ribbon planning irrigation and gateway monument project bid to Central North Construction LLC in the grand total amount of $2,008,972.62 for construction and installation of landscaping, irrigation, and gateway monument improvements within Tech Dot right-of-way along the US Highway 67 corridor from east side Cockro Hill Road in Duncanville, Texas, to Beltline Road in the city of Cedar Hill, Texas, and authorizing funding in the amount of $139,976 for construction of Duncanville's to Gateway Monument, and we will have a presentation from our assistant director.
Mayor Prost, can I interrupt real quick? I just want to state that there is a clerical error in there, so it should read authorizing funding in the amount of $164,280.
154,000, oh, yeah. It says clerical error in the amount should read $164,280, not $139,976. And so with that clarification, we will hear from Ms. Jackie Colton, Assistant Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, distinguished members of the Duncanville City Council, city manager, city secretary, city attorney. Hi, I am Jaclyn Colton. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works, and I am here to talk to you today about the green ribbon construction project. Also, before I begin, I would like to introduce two members of Pacheco Coke who have worked tirelessly to bring us design, beautiful design ideas. With us are Dorothy Whitmire and Nick Nelson. So city council's approval is requested to, of a resolution consenting to the Cedar Hill City Council's award of the green ribbon construction project. The project that we're undertaking is actually a collaboration with the city of Cedar Hill. So, and then Cedar Hill volunteered to take the lead on construction procurement. Second part is the item that we just discussed, related to construction of landscape icons at Winter Green Road and Cockro Hill Road. So that's the second part, that's the 164,280. For those of you new to the council, I can imagine you're wondering, well, what is green ribbon? Does she mean green thumb? Because we're talking about landscaping. Actually, since 2001, Texas legislature has had in place this green ribbon program to fund landscape improvements in areas of the state that have non-attainment of air quality standards. The DFW area has, you know, an air quality problem in that we have high ozone, and it's proven that plants are able to help to decrease the amount of air pollution. So that's why the legislature allocated funds for green ribbon. So the funds are actually administered by Tech Dot. They have established a grant program where they provide funds to local governmental entities for the construction of landscape improvements in these areas. Hardscape improvements, such as the beautiful city monuments, you know, sidewalks, those sort of things, are not eligible for green ribbon funding. And really, one of the reasons why we're so interested in these landscape areas and gateway areas is that they have the opportunity to attract and draw more people to our city when they see the attractiveness, you know, of these areas, and that will result in, you know, increased economic development, you know, increased retail sales, as well as the enjoyment of the residents who live here. Looking at our timeline, and as Mr. Ramey alluded to, we've been at this for a while. Starting in 2017, when we filed that first initial grant application in partnership with Cedar Hill to obtain funds for our winter green gateway, we were successful in obtaining $486,000 in green ribbon funding at that time. Okay, we talked about retaining Pacheco Coke for the landscape design. We did that in 2018. I would like to say that the Duncanville City Council has been very involved throughout this process. You all have helped to narrow down landscape patterns, the monument design, so you all have been intricately involved in it, as well as approving the miscellaneous agreements that we've had to enter into to get to this point today. In 2019, the city applied for an additional grant, and this is for that gateway at Cockro Hill, the one that Mr. Ramey talked about. And so we were successful in getting the $1 million for that. Shortly thereafter, we were informed by Tech Dot that we would be responsible for actually bidding and awarding and managing the construction of that project, which that was an about-face. But, you know, generally, up until that point, they took that aspect on. But Cedar Hill stepped up to the plate, and Tech Dot as well, they allocated additional funds for construction management, so to help us to absorb some of that additional cost we were taking on. Okay, looking at our timeline, in 2021 this year, the project was advertised by Cedar Hill. Four responsive bids were received. The lowest responsive bid was in the amount of $2,597,619. We actually, the other three bids were actually within $500,000 of that amount, so it was relatively tight. So the company that the contract was awarded to, by Cedar Hill, to the Central North Construction, they have done many, many green ribbon projects, and they are based in Allen, Texas. So last week, actually, is when Cedar Hill awarded the construction contract. Now, the project budget for the, this project is 2.9879, excuse me, 2.98726 million dollars. It includes a 15% contingency amount of $389,000, and that's to address any unforeseen site conditions, anything that might pop up as they are constructing the project. Now, depending upon the cost for, you know, any potential change order will determine how it's paid for. And what I, what I mean by that is, the, out of the grant funds that were awarded to the city, this project falls below the amount of grant funds that, you know, were allocated. So if it, any change order, hopefully there won't be any, but we know with construction, you know, how that works. If there are some that are landscaping or irrigation-related, and they fall below, you know, the amount of money that we have left, then that will be paid from those funds. But if any change order is related to the construction of our gateway monuments, then we would follow the normal purchasing procedures in order to obtain additional funding, you know, for those, for that change order. Okay, this is a simple diagram, kind of showing the locations of the gateways to be constructed. One at Cockro Hill, as Mr. Ramey indicated, it will be on the southbound side of Cockro Hill. So as people are entering the city, they'll see, you know, these nicely landscaped areas and these, this beautiful monument. And then at Winter Green Road, the monument will be located on the northbound side, just north of Winter Green Road. just north of Wintergreen Road. Okay, with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Nick Nelson to come and discuss the actual design of the monument and landscape areas.
Before we move to Pacheco Coke, I probably chopped that up. Mr. Councilmember Cooks has a question.
Thank you, Mayor Fortin. Ms. Jackie, go back just for a second, for the, more so for the sake of, I know this has been, we've been having this for a while. Remind me now where those monuments, city limits. I know we talked about this before, the city limits. Just for clarification, tell us where those city limits or those monuments will be stated.
Okay, yes, sir. The monument for Cockroil Hill, of course, will be located within the city limits of Duncanville. Our monument at Wintergreen will be located in Duncanville. Cedar Hill's monument at Wintergreen will be located within the city limits of Duncanville.
Thank you, I just, for the new council, I just wanted to be aware. I know that was some discussion in the past, and I wanted to make sure that was open again for everybody to acknowledge, their knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we will, we will hear from the firm.
Thank you, Ms. Colton. My name's Nick Nelson. I'm an Associate Principal with Pacheco Coke. If you think Mexican and German and put them together, it helps a little with the pronunciation. As Ms. Colton said, we've been involved with this project for a number of years. We hope you feel it's been a great return on your investment as it's added up to millions of dollars from Techstock for you. The process with this design has been very involved with the city and your community and with council in particular as it's changed through the years. The plants themselves will be native and adapted plants to the community. It is also intended that they provide pollinator habitat. So, you'll see as many viable flowering plants as we could incorporate into the design. The sign monument itself gives a nod to the design of the 67 Corridor. As you see the stratification in the walls, that's where the stratification came from in the background of the sign. And then, of course, your new logo will be posted there as well. This sign will be lit and quite visible in the evening, which will also look nice as people enter into your community. Throughout the process of the design, there is a choice made to go for quantity of plants versus installation size of plants. So, the plants, when they're installed, will be a smaller size, one to three gallon as compared to five to seven gallon. This allows you to get a larger footprint with the design, and those plants quickly catch up within a year or two with some growing seasons under them. But with that, I'll be brief. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Just one real quickly. When you all, when your firm built the estimate, the estimate was like $3 million? So, were you surprised when the actual bids came in lower than the estimate? And what do you think was the underlying cause of that?
That's a great question. Especially in the construction market today, those numbers are all over the place, as you may know from other projects. We take great pride in our estimates and keep real-time quantities and prices associated with them. So, we, we were, surprised isn't the right word. Relieved is probably more accurate, just considering the current construction climate. But with a project of this size, and we've been doing these specific projects for a number of years, so we felt confident that we would be on target with it.
Okay, I have another question. This is probably directed for Assistant Director Colton. So... So, Ms. Colton, I'm personally excited to see that we do have a safety net. The technical term for it is contingency. And, and so, who will be tasked with watching that contingency to make sure that everything is constructed within budget?
Actually, Cedar Hill is taking the lead on the procurement. However, we will be at the table, you know, working together. We have a very good relationship with our neighbors.
Okay, I think Councilmember Cooks has a question. Oh, contrast, I don't have the deal in front of me, so I'm just, gotta shoot, you back?
No, you've still got it.
Okay, all right. All right, all right, good deal. Sorry about that, continue.
Okay, good now? Okay, to this, on this screen here, is that monument to scale?
Actually, probably.
How tall is that? I mean, it's very nice, but it just, it looks big.
Well, yeah, it's like 18 feet tall by over 18 feet wide. It's, it's huge.
It is.
Yeah, it's very visible. Yes, going to be very visible.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Cooks.
I do have a question, I do have a question again. So, on the, have you built this monument? Not, the Duncanville Monument, of course. A very similar monument for other cities before that looks very similar to this?
No, sir, this one's unique. The stratification and that jagged edge on the side are definitely unique. And again, tying back to this corridor and the designs of the MSC walls and the retaining walls and the sound walls that you see. So, it'll be a very cohesive design and hopefully, one that you'll be proud of.
Okay, and the reason I was asking, over, over time, over time, I was just looking, wondering how this same, this material will hold up and how will it look over some time? Let's say 10 to 15 years and further, if you have any information on that?
Yeah, certainly. Like all things, there is maintenance associated with it. Light bulbs may need to be replaced or colors refreshed or signs washed through the years. So, in 15 years, that's a long time. If there is no maintenance, it won't be as vibrant as you currently see it. Those colors will tend to fade. And as we talked with previous councils, the red color in particular is susceptible to UV impacts. And so, that is a color that will be, need to be refreshed more often as opposed to the stonework and the concrete work that will have integral colors associated with it.
So, you're saying the lifespan of that before some maintenance is 10 to 15 or 15?
That's, that's a good question. And it's difficult to put a number on because it is so dependent on weather and, and a lot of other factors. The sign itself will easily last longer than 15 years.
Okay.
But with regular maintenance, it will retain its vibrancy longer than if there is no maintenance associated with it.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, resolution. Does, does City Secretary read the resolution? Okay, City Secretary, would you read the resolution?
Okay, consider a resolution.
Moving on, because I have questions.
No, we are not moving on. We are going to take your question.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
Could you go back to the, the landscape icon slide? Think back, back. Yes, ma'am, that one. So, there is a, I know there was a presentation recently to the Parks Board about citywide trails. And part of that plan was trails that extended north or, I guess, north, northwest toward Lyons Park and goes down toward Harrington Park. Is there anything that we can do now in the planning process that would facilitate integrating that plan? Or do, would you see?
I need to interrupt here. Mr. Coats, we are precluded from bringing into discussions items on the agenda that are off-target. You're bringing in something that is not on the agenda. This is purely for the landscape of the icons. So, your question can be addressed some other time to staff informally, but it's not appropriate now to bring something on the agenda into, your topic is off-agenda item.
No, I'm asking about this.
You're asking about trails.
I haven't finished my question yet.
Sir, you're asking about trails. What I'm trying to do is make sure that we keep our Open Meetings Act regulations in alignment. Any questions relating to the landscape icons and the resolution at hand remain at hand on point. And I ask you to please understand.
Okay, I will not ask my question that I planned, thank you.
Before we have the resolution read, are there any other council members that have any questions? We turn it over to the City Secretary.
Consider a resolution occurring with the city of Cedar Hill's recommendation to award the US 67 Green Ribbon Planting, Irrigation and Gateway Monument Project Bid, and CSJ-0261-02-080 to Central North Construction LLC in the grand total amount of $2,987,262.88 for construction and installation of landscaping, irrigation and gateway monument improvements within Techstock right-of-way along the US Highway 67 Corridor from east side Cockroil Hill Road in Duncanville, Texas to Beltline Road in the city of Cedar Hill, Texas, and authorizing funding in the amount of $164,280 for construction on Duncanville's two gateway monuments.
And will we approve?
Second?
Second.
Vote, please.
Thank you.
Seminole Motion Pass.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey, for assisting me with that. We are moving on to Item 5C. Consider a resolution approving a $25,000 hotel occupancy tax grant for the fiscal year 2021 budget to ALW Entertainment to directly enhance and promote tourism and the hotel industry. Turning the floor over to Mr. Gus Garcia, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager, Augustine Garcia with Economic Development. I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about sports tourism. Sports tourism in the country is at $16 billion. As you know, we just got through with Gasso, which, as you know, was a basketball tournament we had in our city, and it brought several hotel nights to the city. Football, as you know, is a very big industry and seems to be getting bigger and bigger. There's high schools across the country that recruit from all over the United States and even across the world. Mater Dei happens to be one of those institutions, along with some that you may have heard of, like IMG Academy or St. Thomas Aquinas. There's just, there's a number of prep schools across the United States that are considered the best that football has to offer with regard to athletes. As you know, we are very fortunate to have the Duncanville Independent School District, which has 13 exemplary schools and award-winning high school. Students from all across the metroplex and across the state come to Duncanville to attend this high school. So, not only do they have great education, but they have great athletes. So, student athletes is what Duncanville ISD is creating and growing and, and we're seeing a lot of their success. We have here today from ALW, Mr. Al Walsh and his associate, Mr. Urick Bates, to answer any questions you may have on this particular item on the agenda. In front of you today is a request by ALW to host a game, it's actually two games that are going to be coming to Duncanville. One of them is between Duncanville High School and Mater Dei Monarchs. Mater Dei Monarchs is the number one ranked by MaxPreps in the United States, and it's probably going to be one of the premier games across the United States that will be coming to Duncanville. Played right here in Duncanville. Mr. Walsh and his associate, Mr. Bates, are bringing it here. So, we're very thankful to them for choosing Duncanville, and what better place than DFW Metroplex than to have those games here? So, what is before you is a $25,000 grant by, a request by ALW to host that game here. So, a tradition in the making, as you already know, ALW has honored the 1998 Duncanville State Champions. The 25,000, of the $25,000, $10,000 will be spent in the Los Angeles Market where Mater Dei is located. The other $15,000 will be spent here. In 2018, 52 rooms were reserved and used. In 2019, 79 rooms were reserved and used. In 2021, 135 rooms have been reserved, 350 people for Mater Dei. 6,000 people are expected to attend this event at $11 to $12 per ticket. 20% of the participants are expected from outside of the city. Another game that is being scheduled is between Bishop Sycamore, which is another prep school that's going to be playing against Duncanville High School. And we're expecting tourism from that event as well. This particular item in front of you is for the August 27th game and $25,000 grant that will be used to promote tourism and hotel stays here in our city. There will be an additional request that will be coming to you in the next meeting. It'll be an additional $25,000 for the Bishop Sycamore game, which will also bring tourism and activities to our city. We're hoping that will promote hotel stays as well as participants or travelers eating and dining in our community as well as experiencing what Duncanville has to offer. $10,000 of that will be spent at Los Angeles, California Market. Additional $15,000 will be spent in the best southwest area. It will be spent on advertising, all of which will qualify for hot tax distribution. Those items will go towards advertising promotional cards at some of our local restaurants as well as local centers where people congregate and visit. Hoping to bring in more tourism, things like four-by-six promotional flyers will be distributed, posters, radio and TV ads, as well as Facebook and social media. The game that there are, that we would be sponsoring would be the one you see that's highlighted in, I guess, in a pink-red color. That's the Mater Dei game. And then, in September 10th or September 10th, which will be coming for you August 6th meeting, will be for an additional funding request, and that is the Bishop Sycamore game. But today, in front of you, is a resolution approving the $25,000 grant request for the August 27th Mater Dei game. And I know Mr. Walsh is here to answer any questions you may have. I have spoken to the Duncanville ISD, and they are in support of this game. It is a real draw for them, and they are in full support of this grant. That's all I have.
Just one comment that I would like to interject. I know that Mr. Walsh and company have been very aggressive in bringing top talent to the Duncanville Independent School District by bringing in teams from outside the state of Texas that have never visited the state of Texas before. And in so doing, has bought popularity and exposure to the city of Duncanville that we could not expect in, in any other way, really. Looking at heads and beds in terms of the nine qualifications for the use of hot funds, this definitely falls within those parameters. And that's why we, as a council, while it was very well expressed within the package that we read that this is the proper use of hot funds according to one of those, or I think two of those nine criteria that were within hot fund law. I also want to thank Mr. Walsh and company for what he does and looking out for our city, taking care of them, and bringing these teams in because we have a great football team. And for his, if you, in the package, my thing is not loading up here, but I read it earlier that the number of celebrities that Mr. Walsh and ALW work with in terms of promotion throughout the nation are top-ranked. They're first, they're first-class. And so, to have Mr. Walsh be a promoter of the city of Duncanville, I think is to our great advantage. And I fully support in terms of what he's doing in terms of getting two teams here from out of the state versus normally, I recall, Mr. Walsh, we only usually have one. But taking two, two into our schedule is a fantastic. versus normally, I recall Mr. Walsh, we only usually add one, but taking two into our schedule is a fantastic press. And I do appreciate that. Mr. Cooks.
Yeah, Gus, would you go back to slides 79? I know what I meant. I'm sorry, go back.
Seven nine.
Right there, I think. No, here's what I'd like to say on that in addition to what the mayor just mentioned, is I want to commend Mr. Walsh for the recent numbers. I know many times those numbers are just numbers that they've thrown against the wall and we just wish and hoping that they will work with our hotels. But I love the point where he has just mentioned that they are committed already for a Duncanville hotel. And I think that's to be commended. So thank you, Mr. Walsh, for making that a part of the packet, that they are committed to stay in our hotels. The other, Gus, I have a question for you. And that is, we don't have the mechanism yet that you talked about or how we track other money spent within the cities during that time. Is that, is that a part of, do we have that yet? Like when they go out to eat, will we be able to track how, how it impacts the city outside of hotel?
That's a good question. So I was actually thinking along those lines as well. As this council knows, in one of our briefing, the EDC is requesting as part of their budget software that would allow us to do exactly that, is we would be able to geofence any particular area within the city and we'd be able to identify with 98% accuracy how many people from out of town will be attending these events and actually where they are going after the event, where they're staying and where they came from, if they went through which airport, et cetera, et cetera. So assuming the council does approve the EDC budget with regard to that particular request, we will be able to identify those for the following years on not just this event, but future events.
Thank you. And then my other question would be, when we talk about visitors coming into the city, is included out in this proposal or with EDC, is it coming along with some type of banners of saying, you know, welcome to Duncanville? I know when we have big events, they have the banner stretched across Cedar Ridge property. Does that, is that included in this proposal? And if not, is that something EDC, is that something that we can look at in the future of making sure we have a great welcoming just for our city period, flags or banners that's going across Cedar Ridge?
So yes, council members, so the proposed marketing plan, if I can read it to you, is obviously the room block promotion, the print and distribute four by six promotional flyers in Duncanville, DeSoto, Lancaster, Cedar Hill, Grand Prairie and Dallas. Print and distribute four by six promotional flyers. Print and distribute football season schedule for Duncanville High School that highlights a classic game. Social media campaign, radio and internet promotions, classic posters throughout Duncanville at different organizations, Lions Club, Ben Franklin Pharmacy, a partnership with the Dallas Cowboys legend Ed Tutel Jones to engage media and interest in the game. If we wanted additional banners or additional marketing media, certainly the EDC could participate if that's what they wanted to do. And this council chose that.
I'm not asking for that now. I'm just, I've looked to see if it was in the packet. So thank you. I was hoping that Mr. Walsh would could consider with all of the classics that he's bringing, somehow as we advertise for the other basketball tournament, there is a banner that could, that's the only banner that I can think of that stretches across street level and especially since it's right there at the high school, that we can promote Cedar Duncanville.
Yeah, it's a good point that Mr. Cooks is bringing up. I know the banner you're referring to is the Sandra Meadows tournament.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a, you know, as he's saying, it does stretch across off six lanes of Cedar Ridge.
So I'm sure this council is aware that it does, those type of promotions would qualify and that would be obviously up to Mr. Walsh if he chose to use that money as such.
Okay.
And as I mentioned, EDC could also cooperate as well.
So I'm just bringing it up. Hopefully somebody's listening to it and will look and see if whether it's us as a EDC, as well as EDC, or whether it's someone that we can further promote how it looks when someone comes to Duncanville. When they come here and they can walk away, they know they're in Duncanville by looking at those items. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Appreciate it.
Mr. Coontz.
ALW is a for-profit entertainment company, and so they promote musicians and.
That's correct.
Sporting events and those kinds of things.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Were there Duncanville classic exhibition games prior to ALW getting involved in the promotion process? So prior to 2018?
I do not, I do not know the answer to that question, but I could certainly find out for you.
I have to say no. This is the first one that is of this caliber that's been brought to the, to the city. And Dunn, you could probably echo.
Yeah, and there has been promotion, but not to this level of promotion and stuff, so.
Prior to 2018, correct?
Okay, and that's what I'm asking. There were exhibition games that were promoted, but prior to 2018. And DISD coordinates this with?
They do work with, with ALW and half of the proceeds from the game go to Duncanville ISD. From ticket sales.
Who's, who's making the request, ALW or DISD?
ALW.
ALW is making the request.
And the Duncanville Independent School District is in, well, the athletic director from the department is in full support of the project.
Thank you.
Mr. McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, Mr. Walsh, this might be more towards you and Gus that kind of sidelines into, into yours is that if there's a banner poll, you don't need to, you don't, but we have the banner polls that do go across Cedar Ridge. So if there is something along that line and that it could also do that, we maybe need to look at potentially updating what the request is. So and Mayor, with that, I want to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Harvey. Please vote. I'm sorry, what, what, what?
I didn't have it on. No, let's move on. I'm fine.
Okay. All right, please vote. All right, we approved one six to one. Thank you. That concludes items for individual consent. And what we, oh, yeah, so what we need to do is move on to staff and board reports. We will take care of those and then we will move into executive session after staffing board reports. Moving on to item six, staff and board reports, item six A, receive the monthly financial report as of May 31, 2021. My paper says city manager, but I think it's going to be Ms. Atmore.
Well, just for a moment, I'll be city manager, okay? Good evening, Mayor, Council and City Manager. I'm here to present to you the financial report for the month of May. And if you take a slight notice, the year is a little off up there, so we'll just move on. It should be 2021. We are not going back anytime soon. We're going to start with the general fund and this is just an overview of the revenues for general fund. As you can see, that the target for the time around this year is around 66% of the revenues we should have received. And this reflects we've received over 80% of the revenues for general fund. Property taxes, take a look at each one of these as, as we go. Property tax, we've already received most of property tax for this fiscal year for May. Over 90%, we received at the beginning of the year because most of the taxes come in at January, December, January and start coming in to the city. And just bear in mind that there's a three and a half cap. The impact of the final collection might affect the amount that we get, but right now we are doing good on the budget. This is the sales tax portion. We've already received around 68% of that, so we're still on target. Remember, sales tax is about two months behind in, in collecting the taxes. So this is, we're still on target for to receive at least a budgeted amount for the fiscal year. And here's a little history on sales taxes. If you take a look at it, when we made our projections, we kind of looked at, went back to 2013 and what we're estimating for 2022 and 2021. As you can see, they're just slightly above, but this was just to give you a brief overview and history of sales taxes as well as to bring you up to what our estimate would come to be. And this is total sales taxes. It's not just what the general fund receives. Let's look at the franchise receipts. Those receipts, we've already received actually 918,000 for the year. And that's well over the average, up to the 66 target for franchise fees. You'll see that some of these are falling two months behind, especially like the franchise fees and the gas and cable. We've taken a look at permits. If I'm going too fast, just slow me down, but I know this is kind of at the, at the tail end of the night. So if, if you need, have any questions, feel free to ask me. But these are our permits. This is coming from building permits. And we have permits and fees, so you can take a look at those. It's only 88% that we've gotten so far already. And like I said, normally the target is around 66% for this time of the year. So that revenue source for general fund is tracking well. These are municipal court fines for the year. And take, and just bear in mind that COVID had some impact on our municipal court fines and fees because of the COVID. So they're kind of remaining low for a little bit. But we do expect those to continue to come in and be around our target. Intergovernmental revenues, those are basically grant funds. As you can see, we get funds, intergovernmental funds from DISD, Dallas County, and then we get reimbursed for the emergency manager. And so right now we're at 38%. Intergovernmental funds can be a little slowing coming in, especially when we take, looking at what, what time of the year we're in. But we, right now, we're targeting to be on target. But you know, we just still need to wait and see for the rest of the year. Okay? Our investments, as you know, interest rates are low. We're not giving much, much interest on things. But later on in the next month, I will give you an investment report and I'll kind of show you where we are on those, but where the interest is. We are doing better than we could be. So that's, that's where we are right now. Recreation fees are a little low. You know, there's a senior, some of the senior city fees are not coming in as well because COVID, that was related to COVID, some restrictions and being closed down. But also that also affected the recreation, parks and recreation and some of the classes that they had to take. They had to close down due to COVID related and also the membership fees. Other financial sources are, are just transfers in from other funds, like the utility fund, where we have admin fees back to the general fund. We have the utility, the sanitation fund, as well as payment in lieu of taxes that are coming in from other funds. So these are just sources from flipping from one fund to the general fund for the overhead that we provide, the service that we provide to those funds. We're going to go to expenditures for general fund. If you see with the general fund, we've, for expenditures, I think that staff is doing a good job in keeping expenditures on budget. Right now, they, they've spent 54% of the budgeted amount. And if you, I'm just, I'll keep reminding you that around this time of the year should be around 66% of the budget is spent. So they're tracking pretty good. Here is a chart that's kind of showing you the original, what the original budget is and what the year-to-date actuals are and then what we're projecting to fall near the end of the year for the expenditures. For each of the areas, for general government, which includes your, your HR, non-departmental and those, those different departments, IT and then finance, parks and recreation, police, public works, fire and non-departmental. So you can kind of see where the budget falls as well as the actuals and then what we're projecting to the end of the year. We're going to take each one by section, going over the general government, showing the mayor and council. Most of the mayor and council, you can see that their, their expenditures for the year are a little low and that's because most of the travel expenses have been low, probably due to a lot of the COVID. We're probably doing a lot of virtual training and travel. So that's why that's a little low for this time of the year. But basically the expenditures for general government are about 62% of the budget that we spent. For finance, they've spent about 60% of their budget for this time this year. So like I said, the municipal court, 58, purchasing 60 and the city marshal is about 53%. Parks and recreation, almost 50% of their budget they've spent to date. The bulk of their expenditures will occur in the summer months. As you know, that's when parks kind of gears up, a lot of activities in the summer months. So I do expect them to be on target by the time the summer is over. Okay? Police, you can see they're falling right in line with their different departments that they are budgeting for. And then we have public works and their expenditures. Overall, that they're tracking well. They've got vacancies and timing of projects is probably where some of, some of the, the low expenditures are falling. But probably during the summer months, we'll probably increase spending as projects come online. The fire department is also tracking well. Their emergency management and timing of the position hires may affect some of their, their expenditures at this time. So just bear that in mind, but right now they really are in target and range. And then we have non-departmental. Now, non-departmental is where we have retiring medical insurance subsidies and this is low due to the low participation. So that's why this is kind of low for this time of the year. And then this is just a summarization of your one-time projects and, and transfers. We spent about, it looks like 1.1 million, I can't see the headings, but for the year so far on just different transfers to your TIF fund. You've got your street CIP that we send money for in order to work on our street maintenance. And then we send funds to grants and for P25 compliant for radios. And we have a loan payment that we made, that this will be our last loan payment that is coming up on this. And I think this is the Eon loan. Overall, if you take a look at general fund for the revenues and expenditures, you can see that we are, the revenues are around 26 million to date as of May 31st. And we've got operating expenditures at 17.7 million that we spent. So that gives us a net to date of, as of May, of 9 million. So that gives us, that fund balance is a little high right now because we, I guess, we haven't gotten to the end of the year. That will be changed because fund balances just roll during the year, just keep their move-in target as we go through the year and spend money.
I'm sorry, go back one more.
Any questions on general fund?
Two fund balances, the adopted.
Okay, the adopted fund balance is, that's the number you see that was in your budget book for prior year. Okay? The 11 million is what is audited. What we call the audited is like at the end of 2020, we actually, the auditors came out with what was the, the real fund balance for general fund. And so that's our beginning fund balance for 2021 would be the 11.7.
Would be the 11, which one?
11.7, 11,714,696.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and that, and that should flow through in your audit book.
I say that this is a form that we will stop using just because it's a year-to-date, but you usually don't do your fund balance until the beginning and the end. And so we left this in because it was in your report. And so we left this in because it was in your report, but we'll be changing some of the reports and how we do it in the future.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
I began, I kinda missed what you said when you first referred to that eleven million versus that adopted eight million.
Okay. Okay, so the eight million, eight million three, we left there, because that is what you're used to seeing in your budget book when you adopted the budget. That ending fund balance, or the beginning fund balance that they started with was listed at eight million, okay? But you never really know what the fund balance is when you're, when you're adopting your budget book for the following year. Basically, because you were still auditing that year, that we're still auditing that twenty-twenty. So we didn't know what the ending final fund balance was gonna be until the auditors left and said, hey, after our final audit, this is the final fund balance for general fund, okay? Yes, sir.
Let me, let me see if I could rephrase it in a way that speaks to me, and maybe it will help. The eight point three seven million was where we thought we would begin the year. But the eleven point seven is where we actually landed.
Yes.
So we have what we think, and then we have the actuality. And, and, and it's exactly right. I mean, we, we're gonna approve the budget for next fiscal year, even before this fiscal year ends.
Right.
So the eight point three million is, is always an estimate.
Thank you. Would you go back, I mean, on this target fund balance, seventy-five days, is that, touch on that just a little bit more?
Okay, that is the fund balance by a policy that the city has adopted, that they would like, I'm sorry, they haven't adopted, but basically it's saying.
Previous city manager's fund balance target, the city's target. Adopted policy, which was seventy-five days, and in this budget represents the seventy-five days that the previous city manager set, not council.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna move on to the, the utility fund. This is our water and wastewater utility fund revenues for the, as of May. And so we've collected about fifty-five percent of, of the revenues. And so we like to say that some of the revenues are like a month behind for utilities on the billing cycle. So you'll, you'll see this fall, this revenue source right now will probably increase in the summer, because summer is when we pick up the revenue source and start making money with the utility fund, okay? And I shouldn't say start making money, we are making money, but this is the fund that usually this summer, you will see this come closer to the sixty-six percent target that is normally have during this time of the year, okay? So this is just breaks down what each of the water, just the water piece of the revenues, line by line. And this breaks down the sewer revenue for each line item on the revenues.
Where's the amount where we transferred back out from the utility funds back to general fund for, for cost center purposes?
That would be in your expenditures. Right now, this is just covering your revenues. Does that make sense?
Yes, I was just, I was trying to catch it, found, this is a new report, so I was trying to find it. Would you go back to that page for just a second?
The page for, where the transfer?
We transferred, yes.
Okay, that would've been general fund, where we transfer.
Reason I was even bringing it up, most, most of our citizens, when they look at transferring from the water utility funds, always seem to be a question of why we're transferring from utility funds back to general fund. And so I always like to make sure that when that item comes up, that you just spends us a little bit longer explanation on that for those that always, that has that question. For those that's listening who wanna know more about why we're transferring money from utility back to general fund.
That would've been, this would've go back to the general fund. I can explain that.
Okay, you, you can explain, you don't have to go back, but just in the future as well, when you get to that, if you'll just pause and talk about that over and over again, because we, we hear that so often.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you.
All right.
So you don't have to go back, just, you'll go to explain that.
Okay, so we'll go on to, we talked about the sewer revenues. This is just breaking down each of the sewer category of revenues that we have in the utility fund.
Dina, you want to mention, I think we're having some technical difficulties. On the charts, there is a header that for some reason is showing on everything, but it's not showing on your screen, so it's making a little bit difficult to read, but there is a header that defines each of them, so she has a copy of the printout, if you can read it.
Let me find out where we are.
I think the first column is budget, the second column is actual.
Okay. So yeah, this is for the original, for the revenues, these are other revenues and penalties and interest for the utility fund, and you can see the percentage that we've gone on each one. The interest, as you said, is tracking, is still gonna be low because of the interest on, the interest rate for our investments, okay? But the other revenues are just miscellaneous revenues that the, that the utility takes in, that brings in during their billing cycle. And I believe that this is the expenditures for the utility fund. We have water and wastewater services, utility accounting. These are all services, expenditures that go on in the water and utility fund. And I, I was really trying to see which one was the, was the transfer, sir, that, that would've been the expenditure. And I'm not really sure if it's in this line item or not. But for the, there's a T R A expense that we take out of here, we also pay Dallas for water. And so these all come out of this, these expenditures for the water utility. So at this point, we're at sixty-three point nine percent of the year way through. And so we consider the, the money, the expenditures are tracking well for this time of the year, for May. Overall, the, on the utility fund, as of May thirty-first, we have total transfers out of four point eight million. And that will include transfers to the general fund and any debt, payments for debt to the C I P, and also money to the utility C I P fund for projects. And so that total includes an accumboration of all of those.
Is that A M I, is that A M I reserve still accurate?
Well, it's a reserve, it's still in the fund in and of itself. It's just what we do on the, the presentation is just show you that that amount that we are allocating for that. But does not, it has not, it doesn't have a specific line item, okay? If you wanna put it like that, it does not have a specific line item. It is in the balance of your fund balance for this fund. Yes, sir?
I think, I think Mrs. Cook's question is, are there sufficient resources in the fund currently for the A M I reserve?
Councilmember, that is actually a discussion we're gonna have later on this evening.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any questions on the utility fund before I move on? Okay, this is sanitation fund. This is where we take the residential garbage collection that is also billed through with the utility billing staff. And so right now, the amount of revenue that we've taken in is about fifty-seven percent of the targeted, of the budgeted amount. So it's during this time, like I said, this is the summer, going into the summer, you'll probably see that get closer to what the target is. These are the expenditures for that fund. We do some expenditures for litter control, as well as administration. There, I believe there are some employees that get paid out of this fund, so that's where you see the administration fund. The total fund altogether, you see a total revenues and expenditures, and you get a net ending fund balance of around seven hundred and sixty thousand. And like I said on the beginning fund balance, as we talked earlier, you see they're two different. You know, in future reports, we probably won't, you won't see that, the one that you adopted. But this is what we've just kept the same format that you are used to seeing. Economic development fund, this is one our economic development director, Ms. Gus, is over, has oversight of. And as you can see that we, for all the revenues, fifty-six percent, it is funded mostly by sales tax. Sales tax portion that is dedicated to economic development. And then you can see all the expenditures for grants and incentives, as well as there's a debt that this fund pays, it also pays for various items like keeps Duncanville beautiful. And so right now, they're at seventy percent of their expenditures for their budget. So I, I would say that not, there's not too much to be worried about. Sixty-six percent is around seventy, is very close.
Ms. Atmore, I noticed in the package that the sales tax overall was trending at about nine percent above what we anticipated. Looking at the sales tax in terms of that percent, or that, that penny portion going to the E D C from total sales tax is much lower than what we anticipate, looking at overall sales tax being quite good. Is, are you and Mr. Garcia still optimistic about the revenues coming from sales tax throughout the end of the fiscal year?
Mayor, I'd like to respond to that. So as a reminder, this is as of May, so this only represented six months of the fiscal year. So if you think about this representing six months, it actually is going to far exceed the budgeted amount. So for example, our original budget was two point four, we're at one point three for six months, which gets you to about two point six million. So because this is our May financial and council as a reminder, we did our budget presentation earlier this year with the workshop, and the numbers were far higher than this, this number that we're presenting. But that's because this is two months, almost three months in the rear. So yes, they're very strong, and in fact, for this to be six months of it, if you look at the earlier number, the numbers that we projected, if we just cut it in half, it would actually far exceed what we budgeted by about a million dollars.
So the answer is yes, you remain optimistic about our sales tax revenues?
Yes, very optimistic.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, and this is just an overall picture, just giving you a summary of the same economic development fund and looking at the fund balance. So that's the same thing applies that we've talked about with the fund balance from here on out. Then we got the field house for, as of May. And as you can see that the revenues that are coming into this fund are about sixty-two percent. And just bear in mind that this fund was, was affected by COVID, because they had to close down during that period, and so there was not a lot of classes that were taking, taking place during that time. So a lot of things may open up, but we still have to be, look at what's gonna happen with the new variant going on with COVID and see if that will have any impact on our, on our operations in that area. This is just the expenditures, so there's a breakdown of the expenditures for the field house. At sixty-four percent of the, of the budget that they've spent thus far in, at the field house. You can see how this breaks down. And there's another balance of revenues and expenditures along with the fund balance. This is our comprehensive self-insurance fund. This is where premiums are transferred or put into this fund in order to cover our self-insurance claims for the city. So right now, this fund, all the revenues that are coming into it are just to pay what we have going out for self-insurance on this. So it seems to be doing well. And, and here are the expenditures where we pay premiums, we pay our workers' comp, as well as T M L and any liabilities, claims that come up in the fund. And there's your overall picture of the self-insurance fund. Any questions? I know I went through that a little bit fast, but I know that if you have questions, you feel free to ask.
Since your time being here, looking at the financials, was there any surprise that, that came to your attention that we need to be aware of?
I'll reserve that for later.
Okay.
You know, I've been here, I think it's going on three weeks, right? I think, I think it's three weeks, I'm losing track of time. But I've done a deep dive into the books, into the general ledger. And there are things that, in my experience and my years of looking at general ledgers, that some things are, are flagged, and so I need to take a deeper look at them. And I'll be doing that in the next few weeks, as I talk with the city manager about how we go about looking at some things. And also taking the time to train the staff that is there on what they're looking at and what we need to be going, what we need to be striving towards as far as our overall management of the books, the general ledger, and the financial picture for the city of Duncanville. So right now, I'm not ready to answer that question with any type of details, but we will get back to you with what, you know, from, from my perspective and what, and the team's perspective of what we see.
Thank you for your candid response.
You're welcome.
You mentioned that, just a while ago, that in the future reports, we would no longer see the adopted budget?
That adopted fund balance, not the adopted budget, I'm sorry, I apologize for that. Not the adopted budget, but the fund balance. Because when you adopt a budget, you don't necessarily adopt the fund balance. You basically adopt the budget. The fund balance is a moving target when you adopt a budget, so you really can't adopt it. You can just, it's your estimate of what you're gonna have to start out the year with. And so you can only give an estimate at the beginning of that year for that budget that you're projecting.
Down, down the road, there's no need to.
Yeah, and, and usually when a lot of cities I've been at, they just usually put the same number as the audited number on that column of the budget, because that really is what you're starting out with to do your budget.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Would it be fair to say that the more relevant number is the number of days that that fund balance represents, rather than what's adopted versus what we have in the budget?
I'm not sure quite you understand that question, the number of days?
Well, we have changed from seventy-five days to sixty.
Yes.
So would a more relevant number in terms of presenting to council tell us how many days that fund balance represents, rather than a raw dollar?
I would think.
I mean, a raw dollar, but equate it to the number of days that we have in representing.
I, I see what you're saying. I would say that that is very relevant, especially when you adopt a budget at the end, you wanna see how many days does that cover me? How, what you're actually adopting is how many days coverage that that fund balance will take you through, whether it's gonna last sixty days or seventy-five days. And so yes, that is an important number, because if something should happens to the city, it will tell you how long you can go without any revenue coming into the city.
That's what I was saying.
Yes.
That may be the more relevant number for us in the reports in terms of examination of that.
Yes, yes, you're absolutely.
I don't think it's been recommended yet, if that's six, I mean, we know that six is in the charter, but I'm still waiting on the, the city manager to come back later and tell us if that's gonna be her recommended amount.
And I was looking toward the future in terms of these reports as well. And to, you know, going to Greg's question about looking at this, I don't know if any of us up here, maybe except, the exception of Don or accountants, you know, looking at this and then learning how we're looking at ledgers and how she's looking at these line items, which is extreme detail, that in the future, when we go into twenty-one, twenty-two, the more relevant number that she would be, that Ms. Atmore would be representing to us would be that fund balance in terms of days of coverage for us non-accountants.
Right.
And accountants.
Yeah, for, for oversight, for oversight and operation, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, from your position as a council, you wanna look at your governance responsibility and what policy you set for us to tell us how you want us to manage those overall funds. The detail level is good, but, you know, you, you pay us to get in the details of that. So yeah, at some point, when you decide how you wanna direct us and what to look at, what's important, that's what we'll take our direction from you guys on what to look for.
Any other comments, questions for Ms. Atmore? All right, thank you very much.
And the mayor didn't give his initial. That's okay.
It's all right.
Was he nice this time?
Yeah, you, you got yours really well.
Moving on to item six B, received the fire department quarterly report, Chief Rhodey.
Evening, council, honorable mayor, city manager. Thank y'all for having us come give our fire department quarterly report. So we'll go ahead and get started. We'll start off with staffing. We do have a new employee, and his name is James McKeel. He's a firefighter EMT, and he's been going through orientation and training for the last few weeks. And just last week, we have started including him in our staffing. So we're glad to have a, a new firefighter on board with the fire department family. We also still have one vacancy that we are currently evaluating to try to get that filled. So we had to have a new civil service exam, and we had that back on June the twenty-sixth of twenty-eleven, twenty-twenty-one. So we should start having our interviews. We had nine candidates on that list, and we should start interviewing them probably the end of July or the first part of August to try to fill that, fill that vacancy. Currently, I have three firefighter EMTs who are in paramedic school. One is attending the Brookhaven College, and the other one is attending our El Centro College. So the nice thing about them going to these schools is when they get out, they have, you know, enough college points that they can add to them so they can get a EMS degree if they, if they choose to do that. Some of our accomplishments that I'd like to kind of brag on, since we've had the COVID-nineteen issue with attending training in schools, are that we haven't had it. So we're really starting to try to catch up, get a lot of our CE hours that are required for the fire department, for us to get recertified. So Chief Chase and I, we attended the Texas Fire Chiefs Executive Conference down in College Station, which is a real good conference in the fact that we kind of get the trends in the fire service and what's legalities are going across in the state of Texas. So it's real good for us to catch up, and it's some, some good networking also. Our EMS chief, Ryan, he attended the Texas EMS Educator Summit in Corpus Christi to renew his EMS coordinator certification, which is very valuable to the fire department that he can coordinate classes, bring classes in, so we can keep our paramedics in top-notch continuing education. We also sent two of our firefighters down to the regional rapid intervention team training down in Houston. Just to kind of give you an idea, what RIT is responsible for is when we arrive on scene, we try to have a pair of firefighters suited up with their tools ready to go. So if we have a mishap in a structure fire and somebody needs to be rescued, those are our first guys that will go in and coordinate a rescue in that structure. Our Blue Card Command Certification courses are going well. We try to keep all of our fire officers and our, our engineers up to date on this system. And basically, Blue Card, what that amounts to is a instant command training. And also, it really emphasizes on the communication part of it between our regional partners, Cedar Hill and DeSoto. Good news, we have our new fire engine that finally got on the line down at Pierce to get it constructed. As you see, there's a couple of pictures there of it being put together. And hopefully, we can have that completed on the thirty-first. And then Chief Chase and I and a pair of our crew will go down there. We'll, we'll go over that thing with a fine-tooth comb, make sure there ain't no scratches or dents, or they've got all of our equipment and everything's designed the way we, we chose it to be done.
Chief, quick question.
Yes, sir.
What happens to current two-seventy-one?
We have four pieces of apparatus. Two of them are in frontline service at all time, and then we have two reserves. And what will happen is one of those frontlines will go into a reserve, and then we will sell that old reserve. We try to keep them on a twenty-year basis, so that they're ten years frontline, and then they're ten years reserve.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Harvey?
Everybody aware of our- Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, that's all right. Hold on just a second. And you may get to this in your presentation, but I can recall some time ago, you were mentioning how the EMT operations were held in such high regard. I think that was by Charlton Methodist. So correct me if I-
I said that.
You said that.
I said that.
Oh, okay. Well, won't you say, well, how do we stand, man? We still, we still up there?
They're still telling me we're the best.
We, we, I don't mean to brag on, on your EMS system, but you have probably one of the best EMS systems in the area. I get, all the time we get compliments about how well we do. We get data from the hospitals that backs that up. And then different organizations recognize our guys. And then we get a lot of call-ins where they're, they're bragging on our, our people. Bragging, some of our patients stuff are bragging on our people. So it makes me happy. And my EMS chief, Ryan, he rules with an iron fist. He wants to make sure that we give a, a good EMS system, and that's the result. Fire station number one, we had a public forum back on the twenty-ninth to receive public feedback on the exterior design of the fire station. And I think it's kind of been the result that that bottom picture, the top one is what we've all chose that we want to pursue as far as our exterior design. And then Emergicon Education Summit was, Chief Ryan and myself went down there to learn about Emergicon's billing methods, because that's our new billing company. We wanna make sure that we're getting the maximum amount of returns on our investment on our EMS. Mike Ryan, he's a big asset to the city in that he is a firm believer in teamwork with our other departments. He has taught CPR and AED courses to ten of our recreation center staff back in March, and one of our recreation staff in May, and then twenty-four of our field house summer camp staff members in June. And then he also taught CPR and First Aid to fifteen of our parks staff members in June. So that, that keeps us on top of the game in case we have some kind of, you know, heart attack, whatever. Some of our staff are all trained on how to, how to handle that. Because everybody, we've all bragged about the fire truck pool. We've participated in providing at least the engine. We didn't wind up winning, but we had a team that participated in the, in the pool. And it was, it was, it was a good day for Doug Sisk and his, and his event. We had a career day at Acton Elementary. Where Chief Chase and one of our engineers went and participated in the elementary school and talked about the fire service as a, as a career back on June the fourth. The BOSS, which is our best of Southwest sports, summer, summer camp showcase. They challenged the fire department to a basketball game. And I am embarrassed to say that we got spanked in the game. Well, we didn't really get spanked, we got whooped. They had, I think they threw in a couple of ringers. And, but we, we always had a good, we had a good time. Everybody laughed, and we had a lot of good pictures. And you notice there on the, the right is the picture of the boys who competed against the fire department. And then some of the girls over there on the right, including Chief Chase over there on the, on the left. You know, he was supposed to be our ringer, but he didn't come through for us. So-
Looks like he was the ringer. He has a bottle of water in his hand.
Well, yeah, and I was kind of thinks he sings well, too, them old chicken legs he's got. Yeah, our, another one of our accomplishments was our hazardous mitigation grant submission. Sorry about the mispronunciation. At the request of FEMA, I don't know if y'all remember, just recall, refresh your memories, we had put in for this grant for the, for the Summit Water Tank. It was not funded, and they had extra money. And so FEMA contacted TIDM and asked us to resubmit that grant. So it's in the process now of being analyzed to see if we can qualify for that grant. So hopefully, we can get that grant, which is what we're really looking forward to. Lauren, also, our, our emergency management operations coordinator, she has created some damage assessment field guides, which is real nice. I, I looked at one the other day, and, and it has a QR code in the front. These assessment people, whoever they are, whether it's city employees or cert, whatever, can take their phone, read the IR code, and it'll tell them how to go out there and do damage assessment if we have a tornado or, or whatever come through the city and do a lot of damage. Want to go over our calls for service real quick? You might want to notice our EMS calls for service are still running about the same. You know, they had somewhat of a reduction during COVID, but they're starting to creep back up again. So that's one thousand three hundred and seventeen is pretty much our average, running average that we do for EMS calls. And then our inspections, I want to draw a note to that. We've been a little slow on the inspections for the COVID-nineteen precautions. We try to keep our inspectors out of harms way, so we're trying to start to catch up on some of our inspections. So with that, are there any questions for the fire department?
Mr. Harvey?
So Chief, how are our response times in terms of, well, our response times when we are called in?
We have very good response times. If we stay within the city, we're generally about five minutes and thirty seconds or less. That's generally to the outskirts of the city limit. As you're well aware of, though, we go into Cedar Hill and DeSoto and into Dallas, which those can have extended response times. But in the city per se itself, runs about five minutes, five minutes and thirty seconds.
And one follow-up question. When you have a vacancy or vacancies, then you generally backfill those vacancies with part-time, part-timers to kind of maintain staffing?
We use overtime.
Overtime?
Over our own people, because we're chapter one forty-three, so we have to stay within that limits of that chapter one forty-three as full-time, basic certified firefighters.
Oh, yeah, chapter one forty-three, okay. Before, before you leave, Chief Rhodey, I just want to ask the mayor, is, is there anything that we need to know about the fire department that you hadn't covered yet?
Negatory. Mr. Contreras.
Greg. I know it's been some time that with a fire marshal and, and one inspector and inspector, it's been difficult to keep up with the thorough annual inspection of all the commercial buildings and schools and every other structure that normally you'd want to inspect at least once a year. How are you, are you able to try to keep up with that with just two people on staff?
I'm gonna be honest with you, Mr. Contreras, we don't keep up with it. We're supposed to annually inspect all of the businesses and schools in, in Duncanville.
Yeah, and I, I said this, because I'd like all the council to know, because I worked closely with the fire marshal and the fire inspector for many years, that, that has been the case. And, and they need, whenever we can find room, they need additional staff to help. It used to be, years ago, the guys on the trucks would help out. And then a law was passed, and they couldn't do that anymore. So it's really important that these buildings get inspected. You'd be amazed when you go in and find people that have welded back doors closed because of break-ins, but they're required exits, and they've been welded shut for two years. It's not the fire department's fault, it's staffing. And, and it's just something that we always have to be thinking about, that, that I'm sure they could use other positions as well. But when you look at the people that depend on them to catch them doing things wrong, we've found doors at gyms at the high school that were chained locked because kids were going back and forth, and somebody came up with the idea to chain them. And game would be starting, and major exit would be chain locked. So those types of things happen. And fortunately, we haven't seen any real disaster result, but it's a disaster waiting to happen if we don't have a better way to perform those routine inspections on all our buildings. Would you agree?
I'd agree with that, Councilman Contreras.
Thanks to the inspectors that do that as best they can. Appreciate it.
I have a question. I'm not sure whether it would be yours or Chief Levigney's. There is some information circulating on social media about nobody answering the phone at the nine-one-one. I don't believe they're pointing toward the regional distribution dispatch center for us, that it's pointed at the city of Dallas. But is there any indicators that are showing that we've got a problem answering nine-eleven calls at our regional dispatch center?
Mayor, I haven't, I have not heard that message. And we're, we're pretty close contact with SWR, and we have monthly meetings, and I have not heard any type of information to that extent about us missing calls or delaying calls or anything in dispatch.
Okay, thank you. All right, no further questions for Chief Rhodey. Move on to item six C, received the police department quarterly report. Interim Chief Mark Levigney. Chief, it's all yours.
How's everyone again? We'll wrap this night up and give our report here for the third quarter. Just wanted to point out our new badge there. We talked about that, our new patch, we talked about that earlier. And that we are a recognized agency of the Texas Police Chief Association. Happy to report that these three young officers are working out on the street in their FTO training currently. Jay Johnson, Jessica Piku, and Anna Figueroa. They graduated April sixteenth, and again, are currently in FTO. And we also have currently attending a basic police academy, Ryan Peterson and Reagan Goodwin. And I believe they are scheduled to graduate their police academy October first. On June twenty-fourth, we had the two pictured on the bottom, Cortland Jackson and Esmeralda Pineda, graduate from their police academy, and they're also currently in field training. By the way, we're, we have one vacancy. And we have a promising young man that is moving through our process. And we hope and believe that he will succeed in the process in a short time. Also would like to highlight that the department has been accepted into the ABLE program, which is Active Bystander for Law Enforcement. It's a Georgetown University initiative. And it closely resembles or is based on the EPIC program, which is the ethical policing is courageous implemented in New Orleans and turning New Orleans around several years ago. It's evidence-based. We've got a couple of our Train the Trainer certified instructors attending next week. And then they will come back and provide training to each of our officers over the next several months. This training, as you will recall, last year, most police agencies, I'm sure all police agencies in the country, moved to put in their policies a duty to intervene. And the ABLE program strives to normalize that duty to intervene into the department. It strives to show practically how our personnel can do that and not have issues with other personnel within the department and how that works. So very excited about this program. So very excited about this program, and I think our citizens should be as well. One of the things, I believe it was on one of our last council meetings that we, that we had virtually at our last quarterly report, that the council mentioned was they were hearing from their constituents that they weren't seeing a lot of traffic enforcement by our officers. And I still believe strongly that was due to kind of correlating 2020 with where we were at that point in time. But as you can see, the first quarter of 2020, we had a high number of traffic stops. And in the second quarter, as COVID began to hit in 2020, we dropped off because we were beginning to have our personnel stop making as many contacts with people to protect them as well as us. And in the first quarter of '21, you can see where we were, and we're starting to level off as we're starting to come out of that in that second quarter. So I think that the traffic enforcement shows that it, it has picked up, and we are looking to do more out there. One of the other things the council mentioned in our last quarterly report, they had some questions about what are our citizens on patrol doing? And this slide highlights our citizens on patrol going out with several of our, or a couple of our sworn officers to different parking lots around town over the last several months and doing what we call BMV report cards, burglar motor vehicle report cards. And what those are, basically, the volunteers would go by and peer into the windows and would notice if someone had left items out that might be valuable to somebody who would want to break into a vehicle. And in April, we had a lot pass over at that parking lot at Tom Thumb and across the street at Aldi. And then in May, that dropped down considerably to about 50% pass rate at the Kroger parking lot. And then in June, we had considerably less cars that we evaluated simply because at that time of day, that was the number of cars, you know, that were there. But we, we upped that pass rate a little bit. What I'd like to ask citizens is please help us help you. We can't do it all. Just be smart, lock, hide, and take, and, you know, we can make it work. But we're out there trying to look at, give feedback. They'll leave a flyer on the vehicle and just let folks know. And we'll talk to folks while we're out there, tell them what we're doing. And, you know, one of my concerns early on, especially in light of, you know, what we're trying to do as a city now and some of the comments we got earlier, was, you know, are folks going to just throw these down? And then we're going to have trash everywhere. That's not happening. So I think it's a good project, and it's something we're actively working on.
Let me ask you something on that real quick. Thank you for spreading that around. I'm just curious, have you tried, have Papado's been one of your spots yet?
We haven't been to Papado's yet, but we can put it on our list.
Okay.
And we will. And we'll do that around lunchtime or dinnertime.
Yeah.
When they're busy. Some of the department activity that we've had over the last three months. We had six use of force incidents. All were found to be lawful and within policy. We had one, excuse me, vehicle pursuit, and it was determined to be lawful and within policy. And we had four complaints. Two of them were internal complaints, both of which were sustained. And we had two external complaints, one for excessive force and one for racial profiling. Both were unfounded. One of the other things the council mentioned is we didn't seem to be engaging with our community at the last meeting. I'll tell you, Ben Luna, everybody knows Ben. He's a legend in this town. He's been here for a while. And he's pictured up in the left corner of those pictures with one of our citizens who had to come in and praise Officer Luna because of the way he handled her on traffic stop. She was worried about being pulled over, about being a black woman being pulled over by a police officer. And she, she came to one of our staff meetings and told our supervisory staff how pleasant he was, how they laughed, and how she just couldn't speak more highly of Ben Luna and our department if he's representative of it. And I can guarantee you he is.
He all right.
And then we had a police memorial there in the center. We did have a recent test at the bottom right. You see Sergeant Freeze. And again, we have one vacancy. And then I'm pictured at the top left. I'm going to try to remember names here. That's Victor, Larry, and Jasper. Man, I can't remember names, but for some reason, those guys impressed me. I've been walking in the parks early in the morning at least once a week, try to get out there and talk to people, see what's going on, what are they thinking? So we're trying to do a little bit more and get a pulse of the community. We also, in doing, trying to be more proactive in citizen engagement, we were part of Councilmember Cook's Meet, Connect, and Learn. Sergeant Yance and Officer Bro participated in that back in April. And from what I understood from Councilman Cooks, they represented well and did a good job.
They did, they did.
Also had the opportunity Detective Berger, Officer Kyle Welling, who is one of our drone operators, and myself to represent the department at the Leadership Southwest Public Safety Day. We had a good time there. Kristen was part of that group, and she gave us some good feedback. Now, moving on, as you all know, this is a slide that just demonstrates the Nibers Group A offense and what's included in that criteria. And then from April to June this quarter, those are the stats that have assembled in each category of those Nibers offenses. One of the other things we heard from council was you wanted to see a comparison. Now, I can only look back for two months on the DPS site, and what I've got there are raw numbers for those Group A offenses total. So as you can see, we all do fairly similar based on our size to some degree, but we do pretty well there with the total raw number of Group A offenses reported. For whatever reason, Lancaster may have been correcting something, and we didn't have a May number for Lancaster on Group A offenses.
Question for Mr. Harvey.
Well, not necessarily a question per se, but just wanted to thank you, Chief Levigney, for presenting this information. It certainly provides a level of perspective that wasn't available before, and just want to encourage you all to continue to present this kind of information and respond to us when we have things we'd like to see. Thank you.
Thanks, sir, and we will certainly try to continue to do that. This is just a graphic that kind of shows, sometimes we get questions from the council and others on, you know, what is our staffing like? And this just shows where we are in comparison to our other best Southwest cities. You might see there that Cedar Hill is actually authorized to over-hire by two. And then DeSoto anticipates, and they believe they will have an authorized staffing of 80 sworn as of October. And again, we're doing pretty, pretty well as far as the actual sworn that we have on staff. Did I say we're one down? And we're, we're looking at a promising prospect.
Chief?
Yes, sir.
I have a quick question on the last slide. All the police departments aren't quite the same in terms of how they staff. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. There are some differences. One thing I'll also point out along the lines of your question is Cedar Hill, unlike, I know DeSoto and Duncanville, I believe unlike Lancaster as well, they have a crime control and prevention district, and they use taxes. And where we have one of the best crime prevention officers in the state of Texas, as he's been recognized, Doug Sisk, they have five crime prevention officers. So they're able to get out there and do a little bit more. Now, everybody should be a crime prevention officer, and that's what we preach. But when you have time to dedicate to that solely, that is very important. So I'm glad you asked the question. There are certainly different supervisory staffing numbers across all agencies, so. But it does look somewhat different there, even though you have the actual sworn, you have some of the line officers and supervisory officers and different division officers. And here's our April major crimes, as we've given that to you on past quarterly reports. I'll give you just a minute to look at that if you like.
Again, I commend you for showing that slide again. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. And there's May 2021. Again, broken down by council districts. And June 2021. Any questions?
One question, Chief. It may have been brought up earlier, and I missed it, or it's been in a weekly report, and I missed it as well, about Officer Sisk's retirement and his replacement already being taken around the city to different events. I think your name is Officer Figueroa?
So Officer Sisk, so retirement, as you all know, is a very individual decision. And Officer Sisk has not put any paperwork in at this point in time, but he has intimated to me that probably in the first quarter, roughly second quarter of next year, he does plan to retire. And Officer Michelle Arias.
Arias, right, yeah.
Yes, sir. Will be taking over at whatever point he does retire. And we're trying to ease her in that position and get her some tutelage by Officer Sisk, again, one of the best in the state of Texas. He knows everybody, and we're trying to make those contacts. So we do anticipate, unfortunately, that Officer Sisk will leave us. There's evolution in everybody's career, and it may be time for him. But we're going to step up, and Michelle's going to do an awesome job for us.
Well, he may be intimating it, but he is very public about telling people that he's retiring in, I'll say, first quarter. To save you the trouble, I'll say.
Mayor, I think he's retiring, but, you know, who knows? Things could change. Who knows what might happen between now and then? That's all I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kuntz.
Yes, sir. First of all, I wanted to thank you for accommodating the request for the presentation of the badge because symbols mean something, and that badge has a great history, and it means a lot to the community. So thank you very much for doing that. And then also, as already been said, I definitely appreciate the information being provided to us, but also to the public, because I know that, you know, a lot of this is also public information. I did have a question about the reporting itself, so we moved from the way that the reports were made to the public before, with, I guess it was kind of a list, kind of like what you showed us here before, and we moved to the crime mapping. I guess it's an app that's, that people can.
You mean moving, so, yes.
Opted into.
So within our, it's called a CAD and RMS system, Computer-Aided Dispatch and Records Management System. So connected to that is our crime mapping. So citizens can certainly go online and get some very general information about the crime that's maybe, that may be happening in their community.
Have you gotten any feedback on the performance of that, or people feel like it's?
Not really. Early on, we did get some, and we were trying to dig into that. It's a little, initially, to be able to look and see who is actually accessing it, and still, as I understand it today, is very difficult for us to do. So I can't tell you how many people are trying to access that or who are accessing it, but it does work. It'll give you some general information.
Yeah, because I have it in it, you know, every time there's, you know, I have it set to a certain area, and every time something happens, I get an email that tells me that it was this particular crime. Is that something we subscribe to, or do we pay for that, or?
Well, we pay for everything, right? So as far as the CAD and RMS system that came with it. And so, yeah, ultimately, we did pay for it, but we don't have an ongoing expense with that other than what we pay for our dispatch services.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one other question as far as the citizens on patrol. How do you feel the participation is on that? Is it where you would like it to be, or do you feel like?
Well, and I'm glad, I'm glad you asked that question because I almost overlooked it. So citizens on patrol, typically those are folks that graduate from our citizen police academy. The citizens on patrol, they do an excellent job for us. They're volunteers. They don't have to come out. They're out at festivals, July 4th. The BMV report cards. They do a lot of things for us, and we're happy to have them. We do have a citizen police academy coming up August 24th, and it is an incredibly important endeavor for our citizens. Unfortunately, we don't get a whole lot of them that take advantage of it. Let me just give you an example. It's an 11-week program, one day a week, three hours a week. And so it's an evening time. But you get an opportunity as a citizen, if you're part of that citizen police academy, you get to hear about why we do some of the things, how we do them, and you get to hear it from our outstanding employees, straight from them. They teach the class. So it's a, it's a way for our citizens to get to know who we are, as well as for us to get to know who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, is it appropriate at this time for me to ask about just the, there was some citizen concern about fireworks and gunshots? Is it okay to ask about that at this time?
Not really, not for, not for the quarterly report. Just so you know that I received that, and I have a very voluminous response from the police department that I am crafting for response to that particular citizen, which will be made public once I do that. And I'll be happy to include you in that. It's, as I said, it's detailed, and for me to craft it so that it properly conveys, yes, there was a situation, no, there isn't a perception issue. But I will get back to you and craft that along with the chief and city manager.
Thank you, thank you.
I see, Mr. Contreras, you had your light lit? Or is that, is that a new light or an old light?
I didn't mean to, but since you asked. With Mr. Kuntz's comments, I thought I saw somewhere where there was some assessing going on about across the city, at least a perceived notion that there were many more illegal fireworks throughout the neighborhoods in addition to them continuing for longer hours. I got reports as early as 5:30 in the morning on the Fourth of July. And in addition to that, those people that are capable of distinguishing seem to be certain that there was a very high increase in gunfire during those same periods of time.
That's the same issue.
Okay, so I have the same question, and maybe this is something we can talk about later on, and that is simply, they're looking for answers about how are the police or fire departments hands tied during those events? Because there's so many people out there doing it, and what are our plans to try to curb that in the future?
That this information is contained in the response that I have from, from former chief and present chief. And as I said, to distill it into positive information, positive and transparent information to our citizens, I'm working on that, and I'm not going to publish it until the two chiefs and city manager have an opportunity to review that draft before I make it public.
Perfect, thank you.
We'll go from there. Yes, thank you. Mr. Cooks.
Yeah, you know, in reference to what you just said, the Fourth of, because one of the things, Fourth of July was, we did the fireworks on the 3rd, and so I think it increased the number of people who want to actually pop them on the Fourth of July. So I hope, now that we, now that the Fourth will be on the Fourth, we should be good next year, I hope. Hey, Chief, thank you very much for walking through the park. I think that's very excellent of you to get out and, and the parade and get your exercise and meet constituents. So I've heard a lot of great things for that, so thank you.
I've got to get my exercise in from time to time, and I'm up here. I've got to get my exercise in from time to time, and I'm up here quite a bit, so I've got to find those places to get those in. But we are working on some other community engagement type of endeavors as well.
Great, I have plenty for you, if you have any, any suggestions, I have some for you. Thank you very much, though. I wanted to compliment you, and I know I did it through the city manager, for having officers on Cockroheal, especially late in the afternoon, where it's a speed race going down Cockroheal. So I'm going to encourage the city manager to continue to talk to our police department to make sure that we are monitoring that traffic is very heavy, and I'm talking excessive 60, 70 miles an hour going down Cockroheal, that it's not safe at all. And in addition to, and it's in the afternoon, I know that when I'm driving down through the community, I'm actually counting the number of times that I see a police officer's car driving through our city. Thank you very much. I see that it's increasing, the number that I can see of the cars driving through, so thank you for that as well. And, oh, and the last, I had a comment, I guess, from constituents about break-ins at Papado's. I saw the numbers there, breaking in on cars for Papado's, so thank you for adding that to your list of making sure that we, that you go in and tag those cars. I think if you put that big orange sticker on the window, that will, they won't throw it away, but they won't throw it away until they get home. But anyway, thank you for all you do for that, I appreciate it.
Before you depart, Chief, I could see interim deputy chief Wilcott back there. Is this your first time here with those two stars on your lapel?
Yes, so during this interim period, we're, I'm rotating a couple of our lieutenants into the interim assistant chief position, and currently, this is Ron Wilcott, he's been with us for over 22 years, I believe now.
So keep those stars on him, and next quarterly report, it's his.
It's his, okay. Well, the mayor said it.
Don't make that man nervous, you know how nervous he get.
Any other good questions for Chief? All right, thank you very much, Chief Levigney, and deputy chief interim, Wilcott. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, city council, city manager and staff, we are going to recess city council. The timestamp on that is 9:59.
All right, we are reconvening city council at 11:03, and if you don't mind, we'll just call it adjourning city council, 11:04.
Just for the record, no action is taken or requested as a result of the executive session as posted.
As a result of the executive session, Items Number 1A, 1B, and 1C, no action is to be taken.
Adjourn time?
11:04.